Good evening, everyone. This is our regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, December 9th, 6:00 PM, in council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council Pro Tim Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Bates.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yeah.
Councilman Cruz.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President, Brightwell Mandelbaum.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda this evening are several reappointments and an appointment by the mayor.
Good evening, Council. This evening I'm before you for the reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority of Elizabeth Ray. I don't believe she could make it tonight. I don't see her here. Secondly, the reappointment of Simon Rivers to the Park Recreation Board. You may remember that Mr. Rivers was appointed last year. He was filling an unexpired term, so he's now up for a reappointment to a full term. And then, we have a vacancy on the Library Board. Longtime Library Board member, Uni Rose, has stepped down. And so, I'm recommending the appointment of Darrell Joyce to the Library Board. Mr. Joyce, if you'd come up and Simon, come on up.
Council.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority for Elizabeth Ray, reappointment to the Parks and Rec Board, Simon Rivers, and appointment to the Southfield Library Board, Darrell Joyce.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the reappointments and appointment as presented this evening. Council, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to the Clerk for the swearing in.
Simon Rivers.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Perform the duties of the office of.
Perform the duties of the office of.
The Southfield Parks and Recreation Board.
The Southfield Parks and Recreation Board.
In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan.
And the State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you. Darrell B. Joyce. Say your name, please.
Darrell B. Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. I can solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
Of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of appointment to the Southfield Library Board.
Of the office of appointment to the Southfield Library.
In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities.
And State of Michigan, to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council.
Once Mr. Joyce has signed, we'll ask. Are you ready to round?
Congratulations.
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 All right. Our first presentation is from our State Representative Samantha Steckloff. I think we have a presentation for you.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here. I'm Representative Samantha Steckloff. I represent the 19th District, which is Farmington Hills, Northern Southfield, Franklin, Bingham Farms, Beverly Hills, Southern Bloomfield, and the Western portion of Birmingham, because why not? And along with me, I also have one of our three representatives that represent Southfield, Representative Natalie Price.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. I am Representative Natalie Price. I represent the current 5th House District, which includes most of Birmingham, a little bit of Southfield, half of Beverly Hills, a little bit of Bloomfield Township, one precinct in Royal Oak, about a third of Berkeley, and then half of my current district is Northwest Detroit. Now, because of some redistricting, some re-redistricting, I will soon represent the new 6th District, which will include all of Berkeley where I live. I came from Berkeley City Council, most of Birmingham, most of Royal Oak, and I'll get to keep my same small parts of Southfield, Bloomfield Township, and half of Beverly Hills. Unfortunately, Jason Haskins, who represents the majority of Southfield along with Senator Jeremy Moss, they both serve on the policy committees. We are your appropriations members, and with lame ducks really coming to fruition this week, they unfortunately are very busy with committee work, so could not make it here today. But we did want to at least go over a brief overview of what the 24-25 budget looks like. And as your appropriations members, we can, you know, we're here to answer any questions. Both of us come from local government. I served on Farmington Hills City Council for seven years, so you'll see a lot of that reflected in the budget that we're going to present to you today. Some key items of the 24-25 budget. Very exciting for all of you here, revenue sharing, finally, finally. Seventy-five million dollar increase in your revenue sharing, and also the thing that we're very, very, very excited about is your Public Safety Violence Prevention Fund. We'll have a seventy-five million dollar improvement to that, too. We are working on two policy bills that we're hoping to see finish, cross the finish line this week, that'll put your revenue sharing trust fund into policy, so making sure that you are receiving the revenue that you are needed every single year. School aid, we'll touch, I know we have some school board members here and some people that'll be talking about what our K-12 students are doing, so a little bit about school aid. We freed up $600 million for school districts by reducing the funding that teachers have already put into their pensions. So we were overpaid. We've been overpaying for a very, very long time. So this is money that goes back directly into the schools. This about equates to, depending on your school district, we're going to say on average about $400 to $500 additional per pupil for our public schools. So it's a huge, huge win for our public schools. $200 million, that'll continue the free breakfast and lunch program that has been very successful here in the state of Michigan. $87 million to improve school districts literacy, as well as a $4 million support for school districts that partner with the Michigan Educational Justice Coalition. Since this budget was presented or passed, we did do an additional supplemental budget, which does an additional $150 million into your mental health. I can't remember the exact numbers that Southfield School District were receiving, but I think it's about $1 million in additional funding for mental health. Yeah, please. One thing I want to add, I do serve on the School Aid Subcommittee of Appropriations, and in addition to this continuing, the $200 million to continue providing breakfast and lunch, we did do an additional appropriation to help support schools that might have special needs with students who have religious requirements that impact the types of foods that they eat, and dietary restrictions, like plant-based meals will be an option, thanks to an additional funding to recognize those needs of individual students. Higher education, I know I speak a lot about this because it's what I chair, it's what I'm most excited about. So lots of improvements in higher education in community colleges. Everyone here in the City of Southfield will be able to go to community college for free, for the first time. Yeah, yeah. So it's called the Community College Guarantee, and any student that lives in a district, so we already spend, our taxpayers already pay for millage at our community colleges, so now instead of paying their fees or their in-district fees, every student that lives in Southfield will be able to go to community college for free. Now, those that live without a community college district, you can think of it kind of like an in-district, out-of-district, and the state will pick up the out-of-district portion, so they will now just be covering in-district. So this is a huge win, huge win, for students in the state of Michigan across the board. We did an additional $20 million increase in funding for the Tuition Incentive Program. This is a scholarship that we haven't been able to keep up with the demand, so it's really incredible that we can provide additional $20 million for this, for this grant. This serves our most needed students, so it's really exciting. I know I've spoken a lot about the Michigan Achievement Scholarship here. We were actually able to increase that scholarship, so majority of students, about 80% of students here in the state of Michigan, almost, I want to say it's about 90% of students that reside in the City of Southfield, will be able to get a full $5,500 to use towards our public education at a four-year school. This is a huge improvement. We were also able to move that funding, so that students can now use that, let's just say they have a whole bunch of other scholarships. They can use the Michigan Achievement Grant. Again, this is a grant, you don't have to pay it back, for transportation, housing, any of those additional wraparound costs that students really need to improve their education will be covered under this. We also have additional $52 million for our Reconnect, so those are for students over the age of 25 that do not yet have a college degree. They are eligible to come back to school for free. We also have, just this week, I believe it's coming, to make it statutory, so instead of that being 25 and older, we're going to be reducing that age to 21 and older. Do you have anything you want to add? I just want to thank Chair Steckloff for her advocacy to do this in a way that will allow students to get help for transportation, housing, childcare, textbooks. We know that cost of living is a big part of cost of being able to benefit from higher education, and she was a great advocate in Lansing for those students, so that's all. Thank you, appreciate it. Affordability, we did an increase of $100 million to increase affordable housing. We know that there is a dire need of housing in the state of Michigan, so this will help with that supply. An additional $5 million of ongoing dollars to the Double Up Food Box. This is an increase from $3 million from our last budget. We also expanded the Great Start Readiness Program, which offers free preschool to way more eligible families, closing that educational gap. We serve a lot on the same committees, which is kind of fun to be here. Public safety, we know that there's a huge nursing shortage, so we have appropriated funds to make sure that students going to nursing or have graduated from a nursing program can help with loan repayment program. An additional $1.8 million in community grants to provide programming on the new Extreme Risk Protection Orders, those are also known as red flag laws that we were able to pass two years ago, and an additional $275,000 for mental health training in our schools. So these are some big wins for the safety of residents here in Southfield. And just a few weeks ago, we added to this a bit, requiring and funding the need for our schools to educate parents about our new safe storage laws. A big goal with those laws is to make, get guns locked up away from kids, so we are requiring and funding our schools to help us with those efforts. See that? Requiring and funding, because we think about those things. Transportation, 226.7 million towards local bus operations. We know that public transit is a very important tool we have, especially here in the surrounding communities, so we're increasing those dollars. And 101 million increase distribution for local roads. I know you all asked me about local roads. I'm sure you saw in the newspaper that there have been some plans to increase that funding. We're at about a $3 billion shortfall every single year, and I'm going to tell you right now, no matter what we do, you are not going to like. This includes a possibility of tolling your roads. We're really focused on trying to adjust a toll of 94. That's still not going to get us to the $3 billion shortfall, so I've talked to you about, before, about the vehicle miles driven, so that our electric vehicles are paying their fair share, and then possibly a very small increase on your packages, a possible 15 cents on every package that comes to your door. Again, these are just ideas that are being floated around. Another idea that you will see in the newspaper right now is using the corporate tax, the corporate income tax. Again, it only frees up about 500 million. As you can see, we need additional revenue, or else we're never going to be able to fix Act 51. Yeah. One thing you might also see in the newspapers is, one of the potential plans is to take some of the money from our current gas tax, and I think for folks like me and many former educators who are in the state government right now, we want to make sure we're protecting our schools. So not only holding schools harmless, but trying to close that loophole that allows us through community colleges to move money around between the general fund and school aid, to really make sure that our schools are kept held harmless from shifting taxes away from schools to our roads. We need both, and we're fighting for both. The environment, last November, we passed sweeping legislation to improve our environment here in the state of Michigan. By 2040, the state of Michigan will be carbon-free, which is very exciting. We have worked with literally every single stakeholder out there, including DTE and consumers, to make sure that our lines will be ready, and it's just, we were able to get to a place, and so because of that, you will see a lot of additional funding that will be coming out to help with those costs, to make sure that the grid is sustainable and ready to take on. For the environment, though, we put $40 million into lead service line for replacement projects. There is a bill going through the House right now that also improves lead abatement for our cities. $25 million in local water infrastructure projects, and $30 million for electric vehicle charging stations across the state of Michigan. Labor and economic opportunities, $60 million for the Michigan Innovation Fund. This is to help launch startups. If you have incubators, I know that Lawrence Tech has been working hard on an incubator, so they'll be eligible for some funds through the Michigan Innovation Fund. $45.5 million for workforce development, helping those grants across the state. We really want to make sure that our small and minority-owned businesses are set up for success, so you'll see that we created requirements for retirement plans for all employees who do not already have a retirement plan, and I'm going to talk a little bit about this. And it also requires Leo to award development grants to minority-owned businesses, but many small businesses do not offer a retirement plan. You can always go outside and get a Roth IRA, but we do have a bill that'll be hitting the House this week. It's a Mike McFaul bill, Representative McFaul, and this will make sure that all small businesses, that they can buy into the state retirement system. So this will be a huge win for all of our small business employees and owners. Do you have anything you want to add? Just want to thank Rep. McFaul for working on it, and to recognize how broad support that this has received from the business community. It was a lot of work to get there. Agriculture and natural resources, $3 million into a farm-to-family program. We're going to be working directly with Michigan State University. $5 million for USDA for animal disease prevention. As you can see, we are seeing a huge issue with the bird flu, so this is funding that'll help work on some of that mitigation. We also create the Land and Water Conservation Fund program, so this will help aid local governments in developing public recreational lands and facilities. Health and human and veteran services, I swear we're trying to go quickly. It expands the Certified Behavioral Health Clinics to more counties. This should help an estimated additional 35,000 individuals. We also increased $30.1 million to support child welfare programs. We're trying to really, really work on our foster care system and adoption subsidies. $2.5 million to continue providing housing for homeless veterans and their families, and I'm sure you have stuff. No? You're good? Oh, thank you. We're here to answer any questions that you, you may have.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Yeah, just some quick questions. First one is around the Community College Guarantee. Are there any prerequisites? For instance, like, you have to live in that district for so many years before you can take advantage of that?
You have to have graduated high school in that district, because it doesn't matter years-based, because you're already paying that millage. So because you're paying the millage, that's what guarantees you that program. You do have to complete the FAFSA in order to be eligible. You also have to have just graduated high school to be eligible. But that's why Reconnect, we lowered the age to 21, so we don't have any gaps in students.
Okay, and another question on the toll road. Why did you just select 94 versus all interstates? Like, 275, 75?
Yeah, I can tell you the west side of the state is really want, what is it, 31, I think that goes out, because of all the Chicagoans, they want to catch their taxes. We're trying to keep it out of the suburban areas.
Why? Why?
We do need a lot of funding. Now, the bill that you will see before you does involve all of the highways, but we're trying to keep it, when we first begin, trying to keep it just along that interstate, instead of keeping it in the, in the quarters where people would be using these roads pretty much every day to get to work, we're trying to see if it would first work on the 94. That's typically where you see your international transit. It's still being worked on, I know.
Well, that's why I want to talk, so you can take it back, because you just said you don't want to include the suburbs, so you're going to just hit the Detroit area only?
Oh, no, no. When I said 94, I meant from Indiana through the border. Yeah, yeah, trying to get out of like.
So still just on 94?
We're trying to get out of 290, we're trying to get out of anything that hits our larger cities. So when it hit, even in Detroit, we're trying to get it kind of like from Ann Arbor to Indiana, trying to keep it out of those areas. Really glad you asked me that clarification question.
And this wasn't in your presentation, but just a question to ask you. Does the legislator plan to address anything with our flavored tobacco?
Yeah, those, great question. Those are, bills are actually going to be up, they're scheduled to be on the House floor this week. They passed out of the Senate last week.
It did, okay, all right. That's what I wanted to know.
I fully support it.
Well, I hope so, yes, thank you.
Yeah. Hi, so glad you asked about Detroit. I need to rephrase how I say that. Yeah, that would be really bad.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
Just a follow-up on the toll road. What is the likelihood of this happening, because is there, is the political will there, or is term limits will be impacting, well, not we can impact, I mean, implement toll roads on the interstate, any four hour?
It's hard for me to answer some of these questions, because everything obviously is being worked out. I'm trying to kind of throw out what all the potentials might be. Do I see toll roads happening anytime soon? No, absolutely not. We don't even, we're not even, we don't even have the infrastructure built up. So even if this were to become law like tomorrow, it would still be a problem, you still wouldn't see it till about seven years down the road.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Change, another question.
Like, I think we're just starting to recognize that because of the popularity of electric vehicles, we need something in addition to the gas tax to fund the roads that we all use. So there's just the recognition of that now. There's a study that, I think the results are supposed to be out by the end of the year, so really any week now, that will give us a sense of what percentage we're able to cover with our current flawed imbalance with, and we know that there will be a gap. So there are a number of proposals floating out there, including tolls, including tracking electric vehicles, and then making them pay for the miles driven, including additional fees to their registration costs, including a fee on packages that are delivered to our doors. These are all possibilities, but I personally have not seen one clear plan that's at the point where I could express support or not. These are just all ideas that are floating out there in response to the results of the survey that we anticipate getting pretty soon.
Okay, well, good. And I have another question. I was going to, but I heard that, you know, the state of Oregon has a very good policy and or procedure with respect to the changing of how they charge for, for roads. So are you guys, in on the committee, actually utilizing Oregon as a best practice and jumping off on that?
There's a few states that now offer vehicles miles driven, and it's not just like, these span from your red states to blue states. Utah has it, Virginia has it. Oregon is the prime example, because they've been around, I want to say they've been around the longest, and what they have is an additional, not an additional, a yearly fee, so you can pay upfront, and then you're not tracked. The reason we bring up all the road funding is because we also came from local government and know that no matter when you're, whatever your state reps come up, the first thing you want to ask about is road funding. So we're here just to kind of tell you and warn you about some of the proposals you're going to see in the newspaper this week. There's no firm, you know, we've been kicking this can down the road for how many decades now, but we really want to make a difference and really make this. I mean, we're, like I said, it's a $3 billion shortfall, so there's no, I guess what we found out in the last two years is there's no one thing that could possibly get us there.
Okay, I'm, change.
Oh, yeah, keep adding.
I want to, you mentioned term limits, and I'm glad that Rep. Steckloff addressed that we've been kicking this.
There's a few states that now offer vehicles miles driven. And it's not just like, these span from your red states to blue states. Utah has it, Virginia has it. Oregon is the prime example, because they've been around, I want to say they've been around the longest. And what they have is an additional year, not an additional, a yearly fee. So you can pay upfront, and then you're not tracked. The reason we bring up all the road funding is because we also came from local government and know that no matter when you're, whatever your state reps come up, the first thing you want to ask about is road funding. So we're here just to kind of tell you and warn you about some of the proposals you're going to see in the newspaper this week. There's no firm, you know, we've been kicking this can down the road for how many decades now? But we really want to make a difference and really make this. I mean, we're, like I said, it's a three-billion-dollar shortfall. So there's no, I guess what we found out in the last two years is there's no one thing that could possibly get us there.
Okay, I'll change.
Oh, yeah, keep adding.
I want to, you mentioned term limits, and I'm glad that Rep. Sekloff addressed that we've been kicking this can down for decades. One of the things that's changed fairly recently is term limits. It used to be that you could only serve as a state rep for six years, and then you were term limited out. And we saw a lot of people, a lot of turnover because of that. Now, we can serve as state reps for twelve years, total. Either twelve years as a state rep, twelve years in state senate, or twelve years, some combination of the two. So it decreased our total amount of time serving as a legislator, but allows us to stay in one brand, in one side of the chamber for twelve years. So this is my first term. I fully intend, I'm looking forward to being a state rep for another decade. And I'm excited to see the results of these kinds of investments after a decade of work. And that, you know, people recently before us were not, did not have that advantage because of the shorter-term limits.
Okay, you started off with respect to revenue sharing, seventy million dollars. And that has been one of my big topics since I've been on council. And I understand Michigan has been notorious for having poor revenue sharing. So I'm not sure how deep in the weeds you guys have gotten into this, but is Southfield a donor city and/or recipient based on the amount of money that's returned here?
I don't know yet, and this is where I'm going to ask your city manager for those numbers. We don't, I mean, personally, I don't know exactly the distribution. And I apologize that I don't know that. I don't know how it's going to be distributed. But yes, Southfield is a donor city, so we're hoping that it's done in an appropriate way. I do know that Michigan Municipal League is one of the main partners on this. So I can always check with them too on that distribution to see how they're going to be doing it.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Without belaboring things, I know there was a lot of information. Is there some way we can get the presentation that you just put on? And also, just for the residents' sakes, is there a time that you will be in the community explaining some of these things, so that they may understand better or have some questions as well?
So glad you mentioned that. Actually, we offer, we have two community conversations a month. So one is held right here at the Southfield Library at 5:30 on the fourth Monday of every month. I want to say the last, but sometimes it's not always the last. So the fourth Monday of every month, myself, Representative Price, Hoskins, and Senator Moss are here. We will be doing a budget presentation again for everyone. And I think we sent it over, the budget to the clerk, I'm not quite sure, but we can help disperse that to everyone. And then if you can't make the fourth Monday, on the first Monday of every month, we also offer a community conversation, 5:30 at the Bloomfield Township Library. And everyone is welcome to both.
Okay, and also for the residents, if we could possibly get that sent to our communications, so we can sort of put it on the calendar, because sometimes they are not aware of it, and maybe they can even become more aware of it if we have it.
That would be wonderful, that would be wonderful, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just to the council, I do have a copy of the presentation that you saw tonight, so we'll make sure that it gets sent out to everyone. Councilwoman Hicks.
Thank you, Council President, and thank both of you. I'm glad to see both of you and bringing good news. Thank you for advocating on our behalf. I also want to make you aware, you mentioned that we have two school board, the school board president and a trustee, who heard your presentation as well. As Councilwoman Haynes mentioned, communication is important. And right behind you, you have two of our advocates for our students, being our student board representatives. You coming here and communicating, and you having your monthly touchpoints are awesome. But the education pieces are really important. And with those being two seniors there, and they representing a bunch of other seniors, how will we, how will you plan to communicate to the different, you know, school districts, some of that good news?
Great question. I was actually talking to James before the meeting started. And unfortunately, I have to run to Farmington Hills City Council right after. But what we're going to be doing is I offer a youth council, kind of like your mayor's youth council, but now at the state level. So we'll, usually around January, I send that information out to all the school districts. So students who are wanting to be part of that, this is one of the easiest ways we can help dispense information to our schools by actually having students as a part of that. I've been doing this for a few years. So starting in January, I'll make sure to, and you know what? To help with communication, I'll make sure to also send it to our school board members in case there's no miscommunication. We would love more students, I see you guys right here, would absolutely love more students to participate in that. And that's why I kind of turned around, because I had just found out about your student representatives, and what a great, what a great idea that really is.
Thank you. I'll pause, I'll email you.
Wonderful.
All right, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. I know you've got to run, but I just want to say thank you very much for the presentation. It was exciting, it was enlightening, and I hope you continue to do this like every quarter in the city. So, thank you. And happy holidays to both of you.
Wonderful, thank you again for having us. Like I said, I know we dumped a lot of information on you. Sometimes it's easier to give you everything and kind of hope for the best and think for the worst. So we will be back, absolutely. And then hopefully, in the beginning of each term, we do like to sit down with all of you to make sure that your priorities are taken care of at the state legislature. When you have so many of us now representing so many cities, it's very easy for something to fall through the cracks. And I hate to say that, but you know, as representatives, we don't have the largest staff. And we, you know, usually come from representing one area. It's been very exciting to take on so many new communities. You do have now four people looking over this community, which is pretty awesome. But just to make sure nothing falls through the cracks, that's why we really want to make sure that this dialogue and open communication is really there. And because it's vital to not only our success, but what we're able to do for each and every one of you.
We still have a couple more questions. Mayor Seiver.
Good evening. I appreciate the fact that both of you have served on city councils, so you know the kind of issues that we're facing. You touched on roads. There's not a city around that doesn't need more money for residential, residential, not major arteries, mild roads, residential streets. And I am continuing to be concerned, and I know I've talked to both of you about Act 51. If you're going to do something with electric vehicles, and it's not fair the way the registration, we're dividing, when we pay our car tabs for our license plates, it's divided by eighty-three counties, rather than Oakland County has more cars and more lane miles than some county in the U.P. This has got to be fixed. I'm sorry, I am Johnny One Note about this. I've brought it up over and over again. And, Mr. Brightwell, we are a donor in many respects. The other, and I'm glad to see the road money. I don't want to throw a wet blanket, there are lots of good things here. But two other things that I've spoken about. Cities like Southfield, particularly minority-majority communities, get dumped with too many group homes. Why can't we get the density requirements for this changed? I mean, we have seventy-some group homes. It's too many. They're businesses in a neighborhood. And some of them are nonprofits, and they're not even paying taxes. Yet, all the time in our police reports, we have runaways, we've had arson in group homes, we've had public disturbances, assaults in group homes. These are in the middle of neighborhoods. To me, it is not acceptable to keep dumping group homes into majority-minority communities. Group homes aren't going away. I just think it should be a more fair distribution of group homes. And the other thing that, from a local perspective, marijuana is legal. Yet, we continue to have illegal grow operations in this city. And I under, my understanding is it's a slap on the wrist if you are caught with an illegal grow operation. Why wouldn't the state have a higher penalty for illegal grow operations? Then, I think it's a five-hundred-dollar fine? If I'm a drug dealer, what's five-hundred dollars? I'll just take my business and find another place. Again, and then they're putting stuff on the street that's not been tested, it's not been taxed, it's not been licensed. Something's got to be done about this loophole. So, again, I appreciate all the wonderful things, but I am bugged by these things. And I don't see any real action coming out of Lansing on it. And honestly, with the Democratic majority, I was hoping for more. But I'm extremely grateful, especially for increased revenue sharing. We're asked to do a lot locally. And the lead service lines, that's a huge problem for any municipality, to go around replacing lead service lines. So those are great things that are, and I'm glad the legislature has acknowledged that. So, thank you for what you do. I still love you both. But these issues are not going away as long as I'm mayor.
You know, it's hard when it's two of us out of a hundred and ten, you know? We want to change the formula, Act 51, I can tell you right now. We've talked about this a lot. We, even in the Democratic Caucus, do not have those votes. And you have to remember. So if anyone's, Act 51, you all know how it's distributed. Because those outside of city centers really do get a huge win on the distribution of Act 51, we do have members that live in those areas, so of course, they don't want to change it. Which is why right now, we're trying, even if we were to change the formula, we are still at a three-billion-dollar shortfall. So I think what's happened, because we don't have those votes, we're really trying to work on the additional revenue to make sure that we can hopefully someday get there. Group homes, I know you and I have spoken about this a lot. We have a similar issue in some of southern Farmington Hills. I believe there was a work group that was starting on it. I will double-check and get back with you. And what was the third point? What was your last one again?
The marijuana penalty for illegal growth.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to be honest with you, I haven't thought about that, looking at that estate, I haven't looked at that estate law. I kind of just assumed that, and I apologize for my assumptions, that was usually handled by our city ordinances. But if you would like to talk about something, to see what we can do at the state, let's talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I never, I'll be honest with you, I never thought about doing that, yeah.
All right, City Administrator Zorn? No questions? Okay. Again, thank you for coming this evening. I know it took a while to find some time on your busy schedule to show up. We're glad you were able to make it, and hopefully, we'll see you more next year.
I have a feeling you'll see us a lot more next year. Unfortunately, we did lose the majority. So, but it's a great time to actually sit down and get the work done. So I'm really excited to sit down with you guys and work on some of those gaps that obviously we missed this term, because we still have the Senate, we still have the governor. So there's still a lot of good opportunities ahead of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is a presentation of the Michigan Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects, Chapter President's Award for the LTU Placemaking Through Landscape Design Summer Camp.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Ms. Stacy Tobar, Awards Chair, Ms. Dana Hernelstein, the president-elect, and Ms. Joni Slusky, past president, as well as the mayor.
Well, I know you've got some slides to show, so I'll be very brief. As you know, our planning department staff, the Art Commission, Lawrence Tech, for three years now? For three years now, we've had this summer camp to introduce high school students to careers in landscape architecture. And it's been a very successful, a very rewarding program for those students who participated. So I'll stop there and-
Thank you so much. Pleasure to be here with you all. And so I'm just going to narrate kind of the thought behind this award. With their outgoing support, Lawrence Technological University helps the Michigan ASLA Chapter Foundation by hosting the highly impactful Placemaking Through Landscape Design Summer Camp. This program provides students with an invaluable opportunity to engage in hands-on learning as they design their own unique spaces. Working in teams within a university's classroom setting at Lawrence Tech, participants delve into the principles of landscape architecture, exploring creative solutions that transform ideas into tangible designs. By the end of the camp, students not only take away one-of-the-kind experience, but also gain a deeper appreciation and understanding of the built environment that shapes their communities. This initiative continues to inspire and educate the next generation of designers and planners, emphasizing the importance of thoughtful placemaking. The city's ongoing partnership with LTU has evolved into a qualitative and quantitative experience through the partnerships of educators, professionals, and students. We truly appreciate the continued support the city of Southfield has provided, particularly Mr. Terry Crowde, Director of Planning. His passion and appreciation of landscape architecture has grown the program threefold. This in turn has inspired students to continue their exploration of landscape architecture at accredited higher education programs at esteemed universities such as Michigan State University, University of Nebraska, and Ball State University.
I'd like to thank Stacy, Dana, and Joni for coming here tonight to present this award. I am honored to accept this award on behalf of all the volunteer instructors and professionals who have contributed their time to make this program a success. I'd like to thank Michigan ASLA and Patrick Judd, Chapter President, for the nomination. Further, I'd like to thank LTU, the city of Southfield, and Southfield City Center for their support. Specifically, I'd like to recognize the more than fifteen volunteer instructors and planning team, especially Joni Slusky from the Michigan ASLA, DEI Committee, Dolores Flack, our Arts Commission Chair, Suzanne Youssef, Sustainability Planner and Help Project Coordinator, and Sarah Malali, Assistant City Planner, who is our graphic designer for the T-shirts, programs, and certificates. I'd also like a special shout-out to Smith Group for leading our Detroit tour and providing lunch in their offices. One goal of the DEI Committee and the Partnership and Outreach Subcommittee is to introduce BIPEC, Black, Indigenous, and People of Color high school students to the landscape architecture and urban planning profession. One notable LA that you may be familiar with is Frederick Law Olmsted, father of landscape architecture and designer of Central Park in New York City, as well as Belle Isle in Detroit. Landscape architects design parks, campuses, plazas, trails, and more. In this hands-on design studio, students have the opportunity to design their own unique teen park at Carpenter Lake Nature Park. Students are introduced to a variety of built projects, from leading landscape architects and design professionals experiencing some of these spaces on campus in Southfield and Detroit. Participants have fun learning research, hands-on design, model building, developing concept plans, and they leave with a certificate and a unique T-shirt. Each year, we see an incredible transformation in the students from day one to their final presentations. We want to encourage Southfield residents to sign up their high school students, freshmen to juniors, for this summer camp, and camp scholarships are available. In addition, the 2025 Diversity Equity and Inclusion Scholarship provides up to twenty-five-hundred dollars per year at MSU undergraduate LA program and U of M master's LA program. As I stated, we started off with a three-day summer camp program. It's grown to five full days for the nominal cost of one-hundred dollars. That includes all the material, lunch, transportation, and over fifteen of our leading professionals in the state, who help encourage the students to get excited about the possibility of landscape architecture. These are a number of the most recent professionals who have given their time and energy to the program, as well as, I'd like to recognize all of our planning staff, who directly or indirectly contribute throughout the year. And this is our last pitch. Last year, we had two Southfield residents sign up for the program. You can apply for the summer programs through LTU's website. Again, day camp is a hundred dollars, includes lunch and transportation and all the materials. Students walk away with a T-shirt, a certificate, and a unique experience. We also have overnight camp for additional dollars, include three meals a day and activities, and scholarships are available. Our outreach has- Our outreach has gone as far as four students from Chicago over two years, one student from Brooklyn, as well as many students from southeast Michigan and throughout the state. So again, I'd like to thank the nominating committee for this award, and we do it because of the youth. Thank you.
This is the official award.
Yes, Terry, could you tell me, it is a nominal fee of $100, is that fun, the whole program?
That's, if you're a day camper, that $100 covers the entire five days. And we do have scholarships available even if you can't afford the $100. If you want to stay in the dorms for the five nights, it's about $800, but we also do provide scholarships, and the university is willing to offer a discount for those in need. So I don't know where you could go for five days of just lunches, let alone everything that you get for $100.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to add it up in my head. I was like, okay, well, that's great. I love it. It's a great program, and congratulations. The last thing I had was, you said freshman to juniors, why do we not, why not include seniors?
Well, in many cases, the seniors have already decided to go off to school, but last year, we actually had two seniors, one who had registered for Michigan State University's Landscape Architecture Program, and another who was considering a different program. So even though they were graduating seniors, they did attend our summer camp, and one of them, we got to have rethink about what he wants to pursue in college. So our, initially it was targeted freshman to juniors, but we will accept seniors if they're interested, it's just usually by then, they've already decided where they want to go to school.
I know all about that. Yeah, okay, thank you, sir.
Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, through all this, how many success stories can you count, or has it been around long enough to indicate you've someone from the womb to graduate?
I'll say this, I'd like to say that every student who has participated is a success story, but we have actually had at least three who actually enrolled in landscape architecture schools at one of the higher institutions, not only in Michigan, but outside of Michigan. And as you all know, I myself changed my degree three times going through school. You get exposed to different things. We definitely had some students who were interested in design or architecture or art come to our program and then get excited about landscape architecture. And we're also, many of us planners have a degree in landscape architecture, so what we try to expose them on is that you can work in the private sector, the public sector, you could do research, you could teach, you could work for government, that landscape architecture opens many doors to many different professions.
Okay, well, I was talking about success from the standpoint, someone going into landscape.
Well, three for sure.
Okay, great, good, thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry, congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right, our last presentation for this evening is the Southfield Student, Southfield School Board Student Board Presentations. We have two students, Michaela Beckford and Eric Spraggins, I hope I pronounced that correctly, so come on up, we have a, the presentation is ready.
My name is Michaela Beckford, and I'm a senior at University K-12 Academy. I currently serve as the University K-12 Student Board Representative at the Southfield Public School Board Meetings. I would also like to thank you all for having me back again after my first meeting with you all for the Parks and Recs opportunity about a year ago, and I am excited to present to you all tonight, to the Southfield City Council. All right. At University K-12 Academy, there is a wide range of Advanced Placement AP courses offered within specific areas such as English, Math, Science, et cetera. These courses are designed to both challenge and prepare our scholars for the rigor of college-level academics. I am proud to share that our AP Capstone Program is back this year for the first time, for the first time in two years. This is an exciting program and opportunity for students to complete the program and receive the AP Capstone Certificate and Diploma. The AP Capstone Program is a two-year program comprised into two parts, AP Seminar and AP Research. In AP Seminar, students investigate topics and subjects that interest them, write essays, and give class presentations. AP Research, students build on what they learned in AP Seminar by designing, planning, and conducting year-long research projects on the topic of their choice. Students who successfully complete both programs will have the opportunity to earn the following. The AP Capstone Certificate, which is earned by scoring a three-year higher on both the AP Seminar and AP Research exams. There's also the AP Capstone Diploma, which includes the three-year higher on both the AP Seminar and AP Research Program, but also an additional three AP courses with scores of three-year higher. I would also love to give a special shout-out to Ms. Hudson and Ms. Lott, two teachers of our staff here at university, for working diligently to complete this training this past summer to bring back this program. Again, my name is Michaela Beckford, I'm a senior at university, and thank you for the opportunity to present to the Southfield City Council.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Spraggins, I'm a senior at Southfield High School for the Arts and Technology. I also have the privilege of serving as the Southfield A&amp;T Student Board Representative at the Southfield Public Schools Board Meetings. Now I have the opportunity to present to you, to you guys, the Southfield City Council. Now, I promise you guys, it won't take too long, I know you guys got a lot of hard-hitting city business to take care of, but I will make this as quick as possible. So, after meeting with the Southfield A&amp;T administrators, talking with students, and consulting with staff, I decided that my Southfield Public School Board project would be titled Bringing Back the School Spirit the Warrior's Way. Southfield A&amp;T has so many talented individuals, and we want to harness that and that talent that they have, and with the support of Principal Reese, we are focusing on several initiatives that we will be working on, such as restarting the Principal Advisory Council, relaunching our school news station, and much, much more. I would also like to discuss how increasing A&amp;T's Southfield spirit has helped create a safer and more supportive environment for students and staff. When people feel a sense of pride in their school, they're more likely to respect each other, stronger relationships will evolve, and people will work together, which reduces the probability of bullying, violence, and conflict. Improved school spirit is directly connected to the safety and well-being of everyone in Southfield A&amp;T school community. And this is not just a feeling, so if you don't know, now you know, that here at Southfield, it is supported by data. From 2023 to 2024, safety at A&amp;T increased by 78%. I am proud to report that the improved school spirit and pride have also helped create a safer Southfield A&amp;T environment. Again, my name is Eric Spraggins, a senior at A&amp;T, and I'm so grateful to have the opportunity to present to you all as the Southfield City Council.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to thank you all. I've had the pleasure of being a gentleman, and I'm very lucky to be too, as well, and I tell you, the Southfield school system should be proud of both of you, and relative to your project, Bringing Back the School Spirit, that means so much more to just us as a society, you know, making people feel included, part of it, giving, I mean, when I was in high school, Cassette, and everything, and it just, you know, it brought us together, like you said, to keep you out of trouble, and all of that, so I'm happy to see that I come back. I'm more important, I'm happy to see you here before us. Highly impressed with both of you, I saw your presentations with Lake Village, I think it was, and so I just appreciate you taking out your time, because we hear a lot of the bad news, but this is the good stuff that we're producing here in the Southfield, so we commend your parents, the school administration, the staff, but especially you, because you could be doing a whole lot of things, and I hear that you guys are looking at some amazing schools, more house for you, and Skellburne Howard, but thank you for being here.
Excuse me.
We appreciate you, and I wish you all the best, keep us posted, especially when you're on the individual, thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Council President. So, Councilwoman Banks and I are proud alum of Southfield High School, so we just want to make sure we put that out there.
And former Deputy Superintendent.
So, and teacher. So, as a product, as well as a customer of Southfield Public Schools, we thank you for making our community aware of what the school is. Michaela, one thing that you didn't mention is that out of 1,600 schools, University High School Academy, I'm sorry, University K-12 Academy, out of 1,600 schools in the state, there are 25. And where that's important for you as residents in Southfield is to know, you know, you always can ask for millages, and you're hearing things about the schools, but it's good to know where your money's going and how it's being well-spent, when you see products and customers such as these. So I ask you all to continue to, you know, bring us good news, partner with us, work with us, but more importantly, I hope that you have several takeaways from this meeting to take back, to talk to your fellow, you know, cop, you know, I'm sorry, your fellow students, colleagues, on the things you heard from the state senators, as well as for the potential opportunity at LTU for those interested in landscape architecture. Thank you.
Councilman Chris?
I just want to say, I want to offer Mr. Jackson, James Jackson, to come up and take a picture, not from the side, you can come on around here, if you want, if you want to get another one or whatnot, you know, you're welcome to.
Councilman Haynes?
Thank you both for your presentation, very excellent, and much success to you in your endeavors, and keep up the good work.
Thank you for being here. We normally don't do this for presentations, but if you'd like to come around, we'd like to shake your hand and thank you for being here.
Yes.
Can we also thank the board members that are here?
Yes, and staff.
Which, with the board members?
Yeah.
Those two.
I think it's June.
Would you like to come up to?
Ms. Blaine?
And say hello?
Where do you want us?
Yeah, I was going to, I was thinking of.
Everybody in?
Come on in.
Wait, here, come here.
School board.
Okay, everybody.
He knows he has to be in his.
Yep.
My goodness.
I'm in at that seat.
You'll be there one day.
Always.
Thank you.
You back?
Yeah, I'm back.
The, the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of a public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The city council may not provide a response during communication, but if you have provided your information, a more formal response will be given to you should the need arise. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Garland McWilliams. Is Mr. McWilliams here? All right, our next speaker is Ken Allen. Are you here for one of the projects? Okay, we'll get to you later. The next speaker's Jerome Morgan, also for the project, okay. Greg Keeler. You need me to have that now? Yes. All right. And so the reason why you need to have it now was because that is a paragraph from the statement that is sent to Southfield residents with 70 towns. At no point in there does it say fix, repair, or replace. It says you have to connect to the public sewer system. So that language is not in there. It hasn't been in there for the last 30 years, it never was in there. So I would like for it to please be stopped saying in here that it is there, because that once again is hearsay, and that's not admissible in court or anyplace else, and it shouldn't be admissible in here.
income that help them finance their tap fee as well as the connection of the line. Uh, I will say one other comment. You have to remember the vote on this was in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine when people were asked about connecting to the sewer. At that time, I, I don't believe Lawrence Tech owned the parcels they own today and the dormitory was not there at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right, that concludes our communications. Next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Council, do you have any items you wish polled for further discussion? Councilman Brightwell?
I can, to further discuss item number, uh, B, the high-speed printer.
All right, I will take a motion on the other ones.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes. Councilman Cruz?
I move that we approve consent agenda item A, Detroit Regional Partnership Membership for ten-one, twenty-twenty-four through nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-five after discussion. Uh, item B, authorization to purchase high-speed copier. C, recommendation to renew the high-speed internet contract with one-point, I'm sorry, one-two-three-point-net. D, authorization to purchase vehicles for the police department. E, authorization to purchase cold patch for streets and highway division. E, that was E. F, proposed lease renewal of Simmons House, two-sixty-twenty-two Berg Road. G, renewal of lease for two-four-four-three-three West Nine Mile Road. H, lease renewal for Cold House. I, garage door maintenance and repair proposals. J, authorization to award the bid for Evergreen Hills Golf Course car pass to T and M Asphalt Pavilion Incorporated. K, award of the Public Engagement Consulting Services Contract for Sustainability Action Plan to JFM Consulting Group. L, acceptance of Lawrence Tech easement agreement for the public art sculpture installation at new park area, two-one-two-five-five Civic Center Drive. And then lastly, M, acceptance of Reddick Cole easement agreement, agreement for a public art sculpture installation in front of the Green Bell area along northbound Northwestern Highway, uh, at Two Town Square.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the consent agenda items A through M after discussion. Uh, there was one question, Councilman Brightwell had a question on the high-speed copier?
Yes, um, I clearly understand the need for it, uh, but I'm just looking at it. Uh, we are purchasing a maintenance contract, uh, for five years from January one, twenty-five to, to twenty-thirty. Uh, wouldn't this, wouldn't the, uh, this high-speed printer, which I, I know is, is needed, but should we be paying for a maintenance contract year one? I mean, should, is there a certain degree of warranty associated with this? If it breaks down within six months, they gonna pay for it or they give it back?
Right, but also that maintenance, uh, contract is the supplies that's included, like the toner that comes with the copier.
So, um, the terminology here that we pur, we are purchasing.
We're buying a copier.
A maintenance contract. It's not a maintenance contract, it's a supply contract. Is that, is that what you're telling me?
We're, we're buying a co, the copier and it comes with a maintenance agreement of we pay, uh, we pay X amount for, uh, copies and they supply us with the toner and all the supplies that's needed for the copier plus, you know, like the on-spot service support if, you know, we need to fix the copier for cleaning and stuff like that, the regular maintenance.
Yeah, I, I got you. I'm, I'm for this, but I'm, it just, it looks to me like we're paying for something that we don't need.
It's included. It's included with the copier.
Say what?
It's all included in, inside the copier.
Part of the service agreement includes the toner. So we're not, we're not buying toner separately, it's included in the contract.
Okay, so, um, I, I kind of under, I think I understand the concept. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I realize, I understand the need for it, but at any point in time with what we go out, let's say we are, we are purchasing this item. It comes with a, a years with a warranty, you know, based on performance or, you know, manufacturing.
Right.
And then in, in, in year two, will something go down in price?
No, it's just continuous all the way across the, the entire life of the copier.
Life of the contract. And so.
So at the end of this five-year period after we, you know, it's over, it just continues month to month until we decide to, you know, you know, just, you know, go on for years and.
Right.
Replace the copier down the road.
Okay.
But all the supplies keep coming to us for, to keep it running. And then also if, you know, down the road, two, three years when it start, you know, if it does break down, it gets fixed.
That's part of the maintenance contract. If, but is, is, is that after one year, the maintenance contract kicks in? Because every, every product sold, we guarantee this for ninety days, we guarantee it for three-hundred-and-sixty days. That's, that's, I think everything in America is built. You can, you can get it for free for thirty days or something.
Yeah, that, that, that's still separate. I mean, the, the maintenance agreement is for the toner, for the supplies, for the copier. It's not the copier itself. But also if the copier does break down in that time period, it's still covered. Everything's all covered. Because the, the company can't make money if we can't print.
Right, right.
So they want to, they want to make sure we can print.
Okay, okay, I won't. I, uh, this, this concept about you, you get ninety days, it's gonna be like a, a fresh baby out of the womb, you know, ninety days, no worries and all that stuff. So, all right, okay, well, I'll, I'll leave it alone. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions on any other items, council? All right, so we do have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve consent agenda items A through M. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next, our agenda items for discussion and our action. And our first item is our twenty-three, twenty-four-year-end actions of our fund balance allocations. And we have another presentation, I believe. No? No presentation? No presentation.
Just a discussion. Good evening.
I promised a presentation.
This is our annual technical exercise necessary to formally close the books for the year and finalize our audit to be published. Um, what we're asking for tonight is council's approval of the commitments of fund balance. Uh, as a reminder, there are five categories of our fund balance. They include the non-spendable, which includes our prepaid, our inventory, and our long-term receivables. Our restricted, that is typically restricted by statute. In this case, it's our right-of-way or metro act funds, which is statutorily restricted. Our commitments, which is what we're here to ask for council approval for tonight. The amount that we assign to encumbrances, those are our POs that carry over from one year into the next. And then our unassigned fund balance, that's really what's left after all these other categories. That's the one that council has adopted a policy that they would like to maintain that at twenty percent of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. We've hit that twenty percent mark and allowing for all the others. With the commitments, we have approximately twenty-eight million dollars that we are asking council to commit. What that commitment means is that council is earmarking these, uh, the balance of these funds for these designated purposes, but council can change that at any time. So council approves this tonight, next month we decide, council decides they want to use some of these funds for a different purpose, council can make that decision.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Hicks?
Well, Austin, I want to thank you and Fred for taking time this afternoon to allow me to ask my questions.
My pleasure.
Um, I do want to take you up on that last statement. I'm hoping that council, maybe at the next call or one to be determined by the president, we can have some discussion on the allocations that are being proposed and if there's any desire from council to reallocate any.
Counselman Brightwell?
I have a question.
You do, right?
Yeah, uh, with respect to the general fund, uh, what is, uh, long-term receivables? I see it went up, um, five-hundred thousand, five-hundred and five.
In this case, this is specific to the opioid settlement that the city, uh, was a party to. Um, so we know how much money we're going to receive, we just haven't received it yet.
Okay. And what type, I, I know our policy with, with respect to, um, to have twenty percent of the, uh, so how, how reliable is that for this particular period of time?
Well, I'm not quite sure what you're asking. Like, are we hitting that twenty percent?
Yeah, for, for the.
Yes, yes. Before we determine, before we allocate the commitments, we make sure that we're, uh, meeting council's policy of that twenty percent. So down at the bottom of that page with the numbers on it, you can see that we've got next year, next fiscal year budgeted expenditures, net of the budgeted fund balance draws, that's ninety-four million, one-hundred-and-seven thousand. And twenty percent of that is the eighteen million, eight-twenty-one, two-thirty-three in the unassigned amount there.
Okay, okay, I'm fine. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the two-thousand-twenty-three, twenty-four-year-end actions for fund balance.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four-year-end action fund balance allocations as presented. Any que, other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Austin. And we will find a, a time to further discuss those as well. All right, next is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to vacate the unimproved northern stub of the Maple Ridge Avenue right-of-way that extends into its parcel located at two-one-one-zero-one Boney Drive to, and modify and expand an existing operations of American mulch.
Thank you, through the chair. PSV twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-one and PSLU twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two-zero will come back next week for public hearings. I do want to note that the items, addresses in red, uh, have been withdrawn from the original application. There was a negotiation between another private, um, owner of the property, so he requested that those be withdrawn. Existing zoning is I-one industrial and P vehicular parking. The request is to vacate the unimproved northern stub of Maple Ridge Ave., which is shown as, as a dead-end cul-de-sac there in blue, uh, that extends into the parcel and to modify the, and expand the existing mulch operations to include surrounding parcels as indicated. Hours of operation daily, nine AM to seven PM. Number of employees at maximum shift, three, three to five, a total of twenty-five employees. The site is currently zoned, uh, I-one industrial with the exception that there's a fifty-foot vehicular parking buffer adjacent to the R-one residential districts. That's to provide a buffer that no, uh, materials can be stored in, in that, uh, buffer zone. Existing site, uh, the proposed right-of-way segment to be vacated is shown here in green. Currently, uh, there's really no distinguishable, uh, area other than a utility pole with a transformer on it. And then the areas in red, uh, have been recently purchased and they'd like to expand their operations further south into the area of red and remove their operations further from the residence. Utilities, these are some existing conditions. This indicates part of the fifty-foot buffer. Our fire department has been out there to make sure that, uh, there's enough clearance should there be an emergency. But that buffer also extends into the overgrowth area as shown on the slides. Uh, these are some images of existing operations, some of the, uh, the buildings on the site. I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about what he'd like to do with these. Um, this is the proposed site plan as it stands tonight. And then I'd like to, um, invite the architect and, and the owner to, to go into detail about their operations and then I'll be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
All right. If you can just give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Ken Moreland, two-nine-eight-nine-five Greenfield Road. I am with Dorchen Martin and Associates. We're the architects representing the applicant, Mr. Randy Blackman, who is the owner of American Mulch Producers. He is with me here this evening as well. As Mr. Crowe indicated, um, Mr. Blackman acquired the three parcels directly to the south and he would, with that acquisition, he would like to expand his mulch, um, producing operation, which would allow him to move some of the, the grinders that, um, grind up the large logs and stuff, um, further away from the residential community and would hopefully mitigate some of, any nuisance from the sound and/or, um, dust and, and debris. One of the things that he would, he is asking for with the special use approval is to amend the conditions, one of which is the hours of operation. Currently, he's allowed to operate from seven AM to seven PM. Um, five. The request is to vacate the unimproved northern stub of Maple Ridge Ave., which is shown as, as a dead-end cul-de-sac there in blue, uh, that extends into the parcel and to modify the, and expand the existing mulch operations to include surrounding parcels as indicated. Hours of operation daily, nine AM to seven PM. Number of employees at maximum shift, three, three to five, a total of twenty-five employees. The site is currently zoned I-1 industrial with the exception that there's a fifty-foot vehicular parking buffer adjacent to the R-1 residential districts. That's to provide a buffer that no materials can be stored in, in that buffer zone. Existing site, uh, the proposed right-of-way segment to be vacated is shown here in green. Currently, uh, there's really no distinguishable area other than a utility pole with a transformer on it. And then the areas in red have been recently purchased and they'd like to expand their operations further south into the area of red and remove their operations further from the residence. Utilities, these are some existing conditions. This indicates part of the fifty-foot buffer. Our fire department has been out there to make sure that there's enough clearance should there be an emergency. But that buffer also extends into the overgrowth area as shown on the slides. These are some images of existing operations, some of the, uh, the buildings on the site. I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about what he'd like to do with these. This is the proposed site plan as it stands tonight. And then I'd like to invite the architect and, and the owner to, to go into detail about their operations and then I'll be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
If you can just give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, counsel. Uh, my name is Ken Moreland, two-nine-eight-nine-five Greenfield Road. I am with Dorchen Martin and Associates, where the architect's representing the applicant, Mr. Randy Blackman, who is the owner of American Mulch Producers. He is with me here this evening as well. As Mr. Crowe indicated, Mr. Blackman acquired the three parcels directly to the south and he would, with that acquisition, he would like to expand his mulch producing operation, which would allow him to move some of the, the grinders that grind up the large logs and stuff, um, further away from the residential community and would hopefully mitigate some of, any nuisance from the sound and/or dust and, and debris. One of the things that he would, he is asking for with the special use approval is to amend the conditions, one of which is the hours of operation. Currently, he's allowed to operate from seven AM to seven PM, um, five days a week. And he would like to amend that to operate from nine AM to seven PM, um, six days a week. What? Oh, and year-round, I'm sorry. The other thing that he is looking for is to increase the storage pile heights. He currently is allowed to have a fifteen-foot-high pile. He would like to increase that to thirty feet, which would also help in mitigating any sound transmission and/or dust and dirt. The vehicular parking zoning that is acting as that fifty-foot buffer that he cannot store any, um, product in, uh, provides that buffer, which then also allows him to mitigate the need for a screen wall, which was settled upon, I think it was two thousand and eighteen, when the previous owner came before counsel and had this all. The special use conditions were approved back then. With that, I would like to, um, have any questions that you may have for myself and/or Mr.?
Did you go through the slides? Why don't you do that real quick?
Thank you for the time. My name is Randy Blackman. I'm the owner of American Mulch Producers. Because we have a little bit of a unique business, I thought it would make sense just to do a little mulch education one-on-one here. Uh, I should probably bring those two kids back up who do a better job, but it, it will, as you hear the terminology and can put some, some sight to what we're talking about, it, it should make a lot more sense. Why the request? Um, I purchased American Mulch Producers about five years ago, but it's been in Southfield for twenty years. We're, we're proud to continue that and, and grow the, the business and invest here in the community. But from the beginning, we recognized that, um, we wanted to optimize the conditions of our company, but most importantly to the, the neighborhood and the surrounding residencials that we have. So we have invested quite a bit in equipment and property to support this new plan. And this plan is overwhelmingly supported by the majority of, of the, the neighbors that we have. We meet individually with as many as possible, as often as possible. Briefly, what is it we do? We operate a recycling center for organic material. So we bring in predominantly wood waste in the form of logs and chips. And, uh, our customers that bring us material are both wholesale and municipality. So the city of Southfield, uh, brings us more material than anyone else. So as, as the, the city is picking up the wood product and, and in storms, taking down trees, they need somewhere to deposit those materials. They, they bring that to us. We work very closely with forestry, parks and rec and highway, um, in that capacity. We do not have a residential recycling center. So, uh, to clarify, this is all controlled and, and wholesale. Our material is then processed through a number of different steps, uh, and, and then sold as an end product in the form of, of mulch. What do we use? We use really three types of, three categories. We have grinders, conveyors and material handling equipment. I think when we went through the planning, uh, commission and, and received their approval, it would have been nice to be able to visually show this, so, so I'm doing that if you bear with me. We have two types of grinders. There, there are, the top is a horizontal grinder and the bottom is a, what they call a tub grinder. So one loads from, from a horizontal and feeds horizontally and one feeds vertically. Our conveyors, um, they range in size. The largest conveyors we have, as you can see off on the right, it has a forty-foot-high capacity, so you can't go any higher than forty. But material sinks, the way it comes off the conveyor and the best practices that we'll talk about here in a second, really limits us to about a thirty-foot height of what we can actually get the pile to. So that's, it's a, the, the number wasn't arbitrarily developed. It, it's a number that the equipment controls how high our pile heights can be. As far as material handling, trucks, front-end loaders, that type of equipment. When you operate a mulch yard, certainly when you do it in a community like, like Southfield, we are very aware of the challenges that can be created, uh, with, with the surroundings. And they really are, are four main things: noise, dust, debris, safety zone and storage. So I just very briefly want to walk you through each of these, how they impact and what controls we put in place. Um, we're very aware of these and, and we operate, um, with the knowledge that we need to control these. As far as noise, um, I'll just give you a, a very basic decibel reading, depending on, on what side of the grinding equipment. This is our largest, loudest piece of equipment we have. You can see at about two hundred feet, you could hit seventy to eighty DBs. At three hundred feet, you're, you're below seventy. And off to the right is just some comparison. So it, so you're, gives you an idea of, of the, the level that you might hear. Uh, we talked about the hours of operation. Today, our special land use, which was put in place, I think in two thousand and eighteen, allows us to operate from seven AM to seven PM, three months, I'm sorry, three, nine months a year. As an, I, I don't, I wouldn't want this going at seven AM every single morning. So the compromise we're trying to come to counsel with is let us hold off till nine AM at a much more reasonable hour, but we do have to make up that time somewhere. So we'd like to do that by grinding year-round, um, but then avoid the, the seven AM time slot that we currently are allowed under the special land use. You'll hear a lot about a higher berm. This is the thirty-foot barrier that we're asking for. It just deflects the noise, right? We, we put the, the barrier on the outside perimeter so that any noise, it would help contain it. These DB levels assume a wide-open path to the, the hearing party, where if you have a berm put in place, that will deflect that and soften that even more. And finally, the placement of equipment, which, uh, is in, is in the permitted, uh, land use.
If I could, through the chair, Rand, um, just talk about, you're not on weekends and you would, you said you'd be willing to close during federal holidays. Could you just talk about your hours of operation, but is that Monday through Friday?
So, Terry, thanks. So predominantly, it, it's Monday through Friday, um, nine to seven. It, in, in dealing with Tom, this, we, it was mentioned that we are, we did come back and add Saturdays. And, and the main reason for that is in the event of a storm, when there's emergency conditions, we are grinding and we do need the need to grind in order to support the activities of those that are working the storms. So if, as an example, our, our yard was full and there's a Saturday storm, the city has logs that they need to bring to us and we haven't created space, we just wanted to add that flexibility. But we don't traditionally run on Saturdays and, and the whole process, we probably only grind about a hundred and fifty days a year. So this is not a Monday through Friday, every single day that we're doing it. It's about a hundred and fifty days a year and it, and it kind of comes and stretches. But certainly to support this, if, if need be, and we had to look at that, we'd be happy to. As far as dust control, dust control does not come off the, the berm that we're creating. It comes off the conveyors. We're in the process of engineering, uh, a chute system similar to the, the picture I, I included here. It will be a little different than this. This is representative of something to direct the dust down versus out. So we're working hard to do that, but certainly, um, any type of berm still helps to catch some of that because we want to be as high above the machine height as possible. The machines sit about fifteen feet high. So you want to be higher than the machine height. So that's where fifteen to thirty makes a lot of sense. As far as debris coming off the machines, as mentioned, we have two types of grinders. The horizontal grinders tend to have debris come straight out the back, somewhere about twenty to thirty feet. Berms would just help capture anything in that area and obviously we would maintain a safety zone. The, the grinder that has, that requires the larger safety zone, this particular one called a tub grinder, that safety zone requirement for us is two hundred feet. So by purchasing the additional property, we're able to position this material well over the two hundred feet requirement. So anything in the safety zone is on our property and we can control and not going or violating anyone near us. And if there were a condition, again, as a final safety, you have the berm that can, can help, help capture this. So it's really a safety thing and the additional property can allow us to position this, uh, in the ideal location. Storage, we've worked really closely on an appropriate and safe way to store this material. We've had the fire department out. We're well aware of the fire code. We work closely with them. Uh, the fire code allows us to have two, uh, the piles, but they want them contained two hundred feet by one hundred and fifty feet, which we comply with. Uh, they support the thirty-foot, uh, pile height that, that we're asking for. I, I know we've all read recently about a mulch fire in the city of Detroit and, but there were some violations of basic safety and, and I could tell you all of our equipment is armed, uh, with the appropriate extinguishing equipment. We have material, material handling equipment on-site and we are trained to, to manage an emergency situation. We hope we never have one, but if we do, we're, we're trained. And we, the other thing we do is we are constantly measuring the temperature of our mulch piles. So we're very much in control of what's going on in our yard. We're not perfect. I hope we don't always have to be perfect, but we, we try to be and we're prepared for the worst-case scenario. In summary, and again, I thank you for your time. We've been a good business partner for the city of Southfield for over twenty years. We work very closely with other departments of, of yours, um, as both a customer and a, a vendor for the recycling end of their stuff. We have been very happy to make the investment with the city of Southfield and on our location to put better controls and to coexist. Um, and this plan has support. It's gone through planning commission. We've had the fire department out to view it. And again, the vast majority of residential neighbors support what we're doing. So I appreciate your consideration of the special land use extension.
Counsel, uh, Councilman Wrightwell?
You know, I'm supportive of this and, and this is a compliment. Since I've been on council, uh, you guys have, um, literally been growing your business and, and I'm, I'm glad to see Southfield been supportive of you.
Yes, sir.
And, and on this site because I, when I first got on council, I think it was a, it was a small operation, but since it's, it's, um, you, you've grown and I'm glad to see you growing and, um, glad to see that you raised success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Haines?
You mentioned that, that your plan is supported by the neighbors. Did you go to the Neighborhood Association, the homeowners association, I'm sorry?
I went door-to-door.
Oh, you went door-to-door.
And I, I started on Evergreen and up over through Melrose and I, I went on multiple nights to get as many, um, neighbors as possible. Without exception, their support. But it's a hard thing to just see in a letter that goes out, so I wanted to explain it to them and answer any questions. The most impacted neighbors, uh, would be the three southern lots on, uh, Evergreen and sort of the middle of, of Melrose. Uh, all of those neighbors have my cell phone number. We speak often. We're always working together. We, we appreciate very much the responsibility we have working where we do and, and, uh, those relationships are, are, are strong, so.
Do you chemically dye the mulch or is it just natural?
It's, it's made into natural mulch. We do dye, so in the springtime, when, when it's mulch season, we will take the natural product and then add a dye to it. It's an organic dye. We, we carry safety data sheets, um, and then it, it colors it and then ships out.
Okay, you, so you do it on your, your, um...
We don't make the dye. The dye comes in large totes, three hundred gallon totes, and that gets injected in, directly into the machine. So most companies have a spray-on process, so it is spraying into the environment. Ours is not. It gets, uh, injected into the machine. It's all contained, um, and, and not airborne. But yes, the material is being dyed on property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening.
Nice to meet you.
We've communicated a number of times.
Yes, sir.
And I know, um, the city brings a lot of its down trees and limbs, uh, to your property. You, so I understand now you have purchased what was the bus company?
Correct.
And then the building next to it, which was a contractor who used it for illegal dumping?
Two-zero-nine-zero-five.
And you took that property as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, so basically you've cleaned up the end of the street. There was a house, um, on the street. Are they, any, any longer there?
Which, which, are, are you talking?
There was a, a re, a single-family residence on the street.
I have a laser point to guide me. I know I was behind you, which doesn't help anyone up front there. The, there, the, the bus property was here, here and here.
Illegal dump.
They had a, they had a, um, a, a, a house here, there still is. And then this, there is, are you talking this one?
Yeah.
So this is a homeowner, um, that we were hoping to include as part of this plan and I'll just say negotiations fell apart last week.
Well, I, I would point out, um, that, uh, this homeowner has lived, uh, with the mulch operation, uh, and I don't know how long they've been there, but with the bus operation, with the illegal dumping, um, that, uh, again, the, the city, I'm very involved with that, with Eagle. It was quite a cleanup effort. So, um, I, I think they've chosen to live, uh, on this street, um, and with that, with that surround. Have you talked to them?
Oh, yeah.
Other than, um...
Sure.
Purchasing their property.
Of course, we, we talk regularly. As far as, when you, you are mentioning, sir, illegal dumping, you're talking about the previous activity of this two-zero-nine-zero-five, correct? With the Eagle? Yes.
I mean, we were there. Uh, we saw the, the illegal dumping.
As I understand.
Including bags of asbestos.
I think that was in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen, something like that. Yep.
It was a tax-foreclosed property.
Yep. Our plan on that property would be to rehabilitate that building. It's in, it's in pretty rough shape, um, but, so we would look to invest further in to rehabilitate that building. As far as this homeowner, um, like, again, I don't want to speak for him, but he is a contractor, he has a lot of storage in, on, on this particular area. That's what we are hoping to acquire as he is moving. But again, the deal, so I will let him speak to...
Yeah, I've seen all the things in the yard. Looks kind of industrial.
I'm trying to be professional.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think you're a great business and, um, uh, it's in a great place on Eight Mile Road. A lot of people use your product.
Thank you.
You mentioned in your presentation that you want to go, your current hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven to seven. You're looking to go nine to seven, Monday through Saturday, but you mentioned year-round. Are you not operate year-round?
So the current special land use that we're operating under from two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen, again, I apologize for that, for whatever reason, what, it was set up seven AM to seven PM, nine months a year. It, I shouldn't say, I'm sorry, spring, summer, fall is what it says. So to, in order to keep up with our business, we would literally have to fire these things up at seven AM every single day to do that in that condensed timeframe. So what makes a lot more sense to us is spread that out over twelve months and, and not start that grinding operation till nine AM.
Okay.
I, I don't know why it was nine months originally.
Well, I, I could add some clarification. The winter months were seen as less cover for the screening of the operation. So that was at the time, it was also discussed that, that, that's minimal time when you do, when the previous owner did the work. So that's why they negotiated nine months.
I don't have the luxury of taking the winters off.
Okay. Mr. Crowe, did you have anything to add? How is the planning commission felt on this?
The planning commission was favorable. The street vacation, the city will retain any easements for utilities. We did, we did have five or six neighbors come out. They're generally supportive and complimented Randy for, um, his communication. What surprised me is they were also in support of the 30-foot-high piles as opposed to 15 feet because it'll help reduce noise. There was some concern about dust traveling and occasionally there's, there's some debris that flies, but I think by purchasing this additional property and relocating his grinders further away from the neighbors, it can only help with, with minimizing those nuisances.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Yes.
Do you have the triple shredded mulch?
That's us. Let us know.
Thank you.
All right. So we will see you back here next week for a public hearing and go from there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is a presentation and discussion regarding the proposal to rezone three parcels on Bush Street west of Nine Mile Road from single-family to attached single-family.
Yes, through the chair. This is a rezoning request only at this point from R1 to RT. There's three lots as indicated at the very end of Bush Street that developer would like to build six attached units. These are condominium units, so they're going to be owner-occupied. They'll just be laid out in a more of a row housing type of setting. Site is currently zoned R1. Future land use supports moderate-density single-family. This is existing site. If you can see to the west, the property actually looks at the back of auto storage facilities. There's no residents immediately across the street. It's at the end, dead end. People are actually driving on their property. You can see the driveway to turn around. And then there's one resident immediately to the south and then are surrounded by some woodlands. These are existing conditions on the site. There's the turnaround that people are using his property for. Now, we're only showing this as conceptual site plan because should he get rezoned, he'd have to come back for site plan approval. The, the site is over an acre based on the density of 9,000 square feet. It's feasible that four to possibly five single-family units could be built on the site. So he's asking for a net increase of about two additional units by building it this way. These are conceptual floor plans. This is conceptual elevation. Again, all he's asking for now is the ability to get the RT attached, uh, single-family units. And with that, the petitioner has a small presentation. He is a residential builder here in Southfield and he'd like to show you some of the properties that he's built. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good morning, City Council. How are you? Also the mayor, as he just stepped out. I'm here today. My name is Kenneth Allen and my address is 6195 Oak Trail in West Bloomfield, Michigan. I'm here today with my architect, Mr. Michael Bishop. And let's start this presentation. We kind of went back with the architect, even though this is just for rezoning, but we did kind of dress up due to our last meeting with the planning department to dress it up a little bit more on the outside, the curb appeal. If you can go to the first page of the presentation.
So that the public can see it. They do have your copy.
Okay, great, great, great. Okay. So in the front there, we went with more stone around the doors and some things around, put a doghouse up front. And in the construction where we call a doghouse on the top. And I'm, I'm, what I'm going to do is I'm going to yield the floor and let my architect talk more about it. So get in and get out of here because he has to go. Come on in.
Good evening. Yeah, we just added some, uh, some design features to the outside of the building, or outside of the structure, just to dress it up a little bit more. Again, this is just a conceptual plan, but just to give the idea, you know, we have exterior stone, exterior brick, some shake features. Mr. Allen said that the, the dormers are the doghouse above the, in the roof line. It is a pretty tall roof line because it's a two-story structure at the back. So those were some improvements that were made from the, from the initial presentation or slide. Overall, the, I believe the units were between 1700 and 1800 square foot on a slab foundation. Deck and patio out back. Plenty of space for a driveway for each unit. Two-car drive, two-car garage. Some additional parking has been added in order for guest parking. Still have some room at the back of the property. If the building department or planning and zoning feels that a bigger approach is needed. So there is some, some room to work with there, but for right now, it's just kind of balanced out. You know, we just threw in a real basic conceptual plan for landscaping and, and just to kind of give the overall concept of what the overall improvement looks like here. So this is just the starting point, but just looking for feedback from the board for rezoning approval. And then we'll move on to site plan approval if it's approved.
Ken, can you just show them some of your other projects real quick?
All right. This is the layout of each unit. You, you have those already. We're going to fast forward. This is one of the homes that I was able to build in Southfield, right in the ravines on Staunton Street. This house is 3,200 square foot home that we were able to put up. And we have someone that works there relocated from Texas. He works for ADT. No, I'm sorry. AT&T. Sorry about that. Next slide. We were able to do these homes on North Wood Street. Quite sure you guys are familiar with this project. Morgan Development is also us. We built these homes, very luxury-style homes. That's what our specialty is, is luxury-style homes. Morgan Estates in Detroit, luxury-style homes. We also did Christie Woods on Nine Mile. Luxury homes. All of those homes are occupied and nice families are in those homes. Also on Bird Road, we did some homes there, luxury homes there. And that street is McCollis Street. We did homes there as well. That's one home off of McCollis Street that we did. Luxury-style homes.
Mr. Allen, you stated at the planning commission that your price point for the condos would be?
Roughly, roughly around about $299. We're looking at.
Wow. And Mr. Crowe, how had, at the planning commission, were there any negative comments?
Well, there was, there was some concerns from the neighbors. There, I think there was a misunderstanding that these were apartments, low-income. And we were trying to explain that these are actually be owner-occupied. I believe he said starting point was 300,000, could be up to 350,000. If you're, if you're familiar with Bush Street, there are some modest salt box homes. There are some are a little larger. There are some that are under repair and need to work, but this, this definitely would be a product what we call is affordable, but not low-income because it's affordable for the market if you're trying to get into the market to be able to afford a house in the 300,000 to 350,000 dollar price point with taxes, mortgage and insurance. So this is, uh, this would be an option. Plan commission felt that we need more types of this missing metal type of housing and more options at, as an entry level into the housing market. They did make a favorable recommendation. There was concerns about traffic, but as I stated, they're proposing six units versus what, four or five that could be built on their own as single-family if it was configured correctly. So it's a net increase of two, two units at, at max from what, what probably could be built there just under the traditional. There's obviously cost savings by having interior walls and, and efficiency of, of layout and only having exterior units and, and shared utilities and so forth. So it does provide a more affordable market rate housing for individuals starting out. That was basically the discussion at planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. I've seen, I think, every one of your homes and they're absolutely beautiful.
Thank you.
Um, question. Christie Woods, is that, are those considered detached condominium complex or they're single-family?
Single-family residence.
It is single-family residential. Okay. And how large is this property that you're proposing developing six homes on?
Each unit is roughly right around 16 to 1800 square feet. So.
Just over an acre.
Yeah.
So I was going to say, why couldn't you just build like a few homes there, but I don't know if you could?
The minimum requirement is 9,000 square feet.
9,000 square feet.
Under the R1, 9,000 square foot lots. So that's a, less than a quarter acre. So again, there's, there's additional costs if you lay, lay these out as individual, single-family units. You're just, you're just increasing the price point. So again, we're, again, we're looking at some different options that are more affordable. It's not low-income, but it's more affordable as a starting entry into the market of home ownership.
Have you developed, I mean, what you showed us in this packet was homes.
Yes.
But have you done townhomes before?
Oh, yes. We have townhomes right outside of our homes downtown in Detroit. We have about 40 condominiums down there. All nice, beautiful condominium, condominiums, all filled.
I'd love to see a picture of it, but, um.
I'm sorry I didn't include those, but I do have the pictures.
Can you get it for us for next week?
Yes, I'd love to see it. I, I know the quality of your work is beautiful. I would have loved to have seen one, one or two, two or three of these homes on that property, but.
I'll definitely get it for you right away. We'll definitely get the pictures for you right away.
So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Chris?
Yes, I just have one quick question. Do you all, first of all, your work is wonderful. I mean, I wish I could live in one of those places. But I do want to know, do you do ranch-style homes at all?
Yes, we do. Yes. We do luxury ranch-style homes, spalling ranches.
I didn't see anything in here like that.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, I was just curious because I think ranch-style will work for some of us that are becoming of age.
Ranch is really nice.
Like have that option because they go real fast out here in Southfield.
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay. Well, keep, keep that in mind for me and call me when you do it.
Through the chair, if I could, these are like first-floor master en suite bedrooms, which appeals to many.
I can work with that.
That's one of the key components. And we, we only asked him to provide some housing examples in Southfield, just so you're familiar with it.
Yeah.
We can have you provide some additional photos for next week. But I think I wanted to say, even though these are two-bedroom, what we see and hear is the need is the first-floor master en suite. So the bathrooms and bedroom, so all there are accessible for, for older adults and, and others, right?
Right, right. And even the house that, um, that we did on Staunton, we did a master suite on the main floor. Four master suite on the main floor. And then it was four rooms upstairs, I think it was four rooms upstairs on that home there.
Sounds great.
Also, just to pull out the boulevard and there, I don't know if you wanted to talk about that. I know that was.
Well, we're not really here to talk about site plan issues.
Okay, all right.
But I thought it would be helpful for you to share conceptually.
Great.
So as they make their determination to do the rezoning. And then what, if this is successful and you come back, we'll get into the more details.
Great, great.
Alex Frank?
Councilman Brightwell?
What, I knew you missed the price point around 300,000. What is the, um, that, that zip code? What is, what is the, the relative price for that, that, that zip code?
We have the city assessor here. We did ask the deputy city assessor to give us an opinion on, on the area. I think from what the residents had said, there are a number of homes on that street in the 150,000 dollar range and up. They did, assessing did not deem this to be detrimental to any of the existing property owners. The, someone was concerned about their taxes being raised, but it can only raise 5% or, or the rate of inflation, whatever is less. So even though the price point might be double what a number of the homes are, and I'll defer to Justin if, if you want to come up and add anything else to it.
Being that they're only adding the six units, we found that it's not going to be, um, you know, have an effect on the value for the rest of the homes in that neighborhood. Being that they're only adding the six new units, we, we found that it's not going to be enough volume of homes to increase the value of properties in that neighborhood.
Okay. That's good to hear, but over the years, I've, I've read about, you know, the, you know, developers coming to these neighborhoods and you kind of Bigfoot. They call it a Bigfoot. The other property around you is built something that's, that's elaborate or whatever. So is that, is that a, is that a possibility of this, this?
Well, I would say if, if they built some of their larger mansion-type homes on the street, that, that could have that Bigfoot effect. But this is, this is not that type of housing.
Okay.
So some of the other ones that the price point is probably close to a million or over a million, that, that would be Bigfoot.
Okay.
I, I also point out, maybe Justin, there's a couple of single-family homes under construction, one of which is substantially complete at Helen Street in West Nine Mile. Do you know what that value is?
I, I would assume that one's around 400,000.
So you got one that's right around the corner that's just been built in the 400,000 dollar range.
Okay.
These are going to be in the 300,000 dollar range. So a little bit more affordable for entry-level homeownership.
Okay. All right. So.
And we're not talking about the million-dollar-plus home being built here, like some of the pictures that he showed.
Okay. And what, what were the recommendations of the planning department?
They were in favor of it.
Okay.
And again, this is just the rezoning. They'll have to come back and prove to us that the layout, landscaping, circulation and all that is, is, meets our requirements.
Okay. No, it looks good. It's a good, but I'm thinking about globally what's going on over there. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, I know this is just a rezoning, but for me, it would also be helpful. And I think Mr. Morgan was trying to explain about like the site plan portion, even though this isn't the site plan, but that can help to decide if we're going to approve or deny the rezoning. And also pictures regarding this. I know you said this is a rezoning only and we'll talk about the other portion later, but it would be helpful to me because if this is what we're talking about, but that's not what the pictures were in here. So.
Well, it, if, if we could go back to your, your elevation, what, what I was trying to get is that, that seems like an excessive amount of parking and pavement. So that's why I didn't want to get into site plan issues. There'd be more green space, less parking. But as far as the layout of the six units, that's pretty much what is shown on the site plan is, is what he's showing here in the elevation. But I didn't want to get into the site plan issues because there's going to be more landscaping, there's going to be less park pavement, there's going to be sidewalks and all those other things that we would incorporate in the site plan review.
No.
But as far as conceptually, this is, it's a two-story units with front-entry garages. And then there would be some additional parking for, for guests, but not as much as, as he's proposing.
And you said they were also talking about brick?
You, you had indicated brick and stone.
The view on the, on the top is just showing more or less two units. So you see the two entry doors right below the, the dormer. So that splits the, the two units. But that's just in a large view, just to give you an idea of, a little bit more up close than the, than the view below. And that's the full six units below it. And that's the full six units below it. So that's gonna be your street elevation.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, I don't wanna, I know we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves talking about site plan issues when everything depends on the rezoning. With the change that we made in our, the tax amendment change we made with the zoning, their site plan, would that come back to council or would that be strictly done through?
Now, in this particular case, it comes to council. I believe based on the unit count.
Okay.
I'll double check that. And again, we haven't really vetted the unit count and everything, but.
Okay. Council, any other questions on this? All right, so again, we will see you next week for a public hearing. You know, and I am glad that you're here to bring something different to Southfield and hopefully we'll see what happens next week, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Our next item is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to amend the approved overlay development district at 29777 Telegraph Road to permit construction of a Culvers Restaurant on the northeastern outlot. I guess it's good that they wanna build a second restaurant when the first one's still under construction.
Yeah. So I believe this is the, is it the Onyx Building?
Correct.
Okay, so you got the existing Onyx Building. And if anything would convince you that we have too much parking, you can look at this aerial and see barely any cars on the site. And as you recall, this northeast corner came in for an out parcel development. Conceptually, council approved a two-unit restaurant with drive-through. Well, we actually have prospective development, proposed Culvers Restaurant. The Culvers hours of operation are ten AM to eleven PM, number of staff twelve to fifteen on the largest shift. The overlay development district, it's been already approved, they'd be amending that. It's supported by the future land use plan. Now, this is a little bit more robust parking scheme during the work week. But you can still see there's an excessive amount of parking, especially on the rear, existing conditions. And then this was the previously approved outlet that had a drive-through with two restaurants. This is the Culvers versus, and the landscaping plans, so some slight modifications from what was previously approved. But overall, the landscaping and some of the amenities are similar. This is a previously approved conceptual renderings of a more modern look restaurants. This is what was previously presented to council. And then this is a slightly modified and upgraded Culvers to provide a little bit more durable materials and to match a little more conceptually with the modern look that was previously approved. And these are some color renderings of how this would look on the site. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our developer. He can maybe talk about this project and give an update on your Southfield Road project as well.
Andrew Zelke, 4564 Oakhurst Ridge Road, Clarkston, Michigan. Good evening, City Council. Obviously, we're under construction with our first Culvers on Southfield Road. And we just got the foundation installed on that. With this project that we're currently doing here, we're trying to change the overlay district to modify for a new Culvers project at the corner of corner of Farm Brook and Telegraph Road. And I'm pretty much open for any type of questions they might have. If you remember, about two years ago, we had the same type of conversation with a similar project of this nature.
Councilwoman Hoag?
I guess my only question is what we've all been saying. We're starting to now talk about a second one. What is the status of the first one?
The first one, we're under construction right now. We just got this site improvements put in, foundation, and we'll start framing here shortly.
And you expect to have the first one open before this one, for sure?
Correct, yes, yep.
About when, the first one?
The first one, probably late spring, early to late spring.
And then this one?
Probably starting this summer or the next summer.
Through you, Andrew, do you wanna just update the council on why there were some delays at the previous site?
Yeah, with the previous site, there were some delays with some structural issues because these are wood type frame buildings. So we had to go through some special structural engineering for that, and it took a lot longer to get that over and corrected and make sure that the building is built within the standards of Southfield.
So would that mean that this building that you're proposing wouldn't have the same delays because you already know what to do?
Well, the delays will be over with because now we know what to do.
Right.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heans?
Did you say summer twenty twenty-five for the Telegraph one?
Correct, yep.
Oh, good.
To break ground?
Yeah, to break ground, probably.
Be done by December?
Yeah, hopefully, yes, exactly.
Call me.
If not, maybe a little bit sooner than that.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. To Mr. Crowe, how close is this to? There's a chicken restaurant?
Popeyes?
Is it Popeyes? Popeye, how close is this to Popeyes?
It's a few, it's further, further south.
Yeah, Popeyes is further south, it's probably two, three businesses, at least one office complex over.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time.
There's another office complex and then I believe it's south of that.
So it's Popeyes and then going north, there's, I call this Old Comerica Building.
Yeah, it's a bank, I think, there's the foundation.
That's where that Panda Express was approved.
Okay, and then it's the next.
Then this is north of that office complex, and then he's on the northern part adjacent to Farm Brook Road.
Yeah, the corner of Farm Brook.
So this is closest to Farm Brook, so it's about a half a mile from Telegraph and 12th.
Okay, I guess my concern is the stacking of, will there be stacking of cars? Like with the Popeyes, I mean, right now, that's a dangerous situation. I mean, you could be driving down Telegraph Road and the cars are waiting to get into Popeyes.
I agree, but if you see this, the way this is located, there's plenty of stacking and exiting before you get to the ingress, egress, egress on Telegraph Road. So the orientation of this is north-south, whereas the Popeyes was a retrofit in the former Wendy's. And we didn't have the luxury of pushing that further away. And this is also a double stack.
Yeah, correct.
Double ordering?
Yeah, our drive-through operates totally different than the standard Popeyes or any other type of drive-through restaurants. That we take the orders. Our drive-through operates differently than a standard QSR type restaurant. Where our orders are taken and then our food is prepared fresh and the money is paid at the window and the cars are pulled forward. Where Popeyes and other restaurants, they'll stack the cars behind the drive-through window and that'll lead to the stacking out on the Telegraph. So we contain all of our cars, we can probably handle twice as many cars as, you know, as a typical QSR type restaurant due to how our stacking and how our orders are taken at our restaurant.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking, in another community, when I did visit a Culvers for the first time.
Yeah.
As I'm waiting for ours to open up, the cars were going into the streets. And I realize it is made to order, but they just couldn't accommodate the cars fast enough. So just wanna make sure that's not gonna happen at this location.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what that night was when you arrived there after staffing issues. I have no idea what, you know, part of the season it was. But like I said, you know, we've got, you know, overabundance of stacking in front of the drive-through as well as, you know, at the speaker post and back.
And Mr. Crowe, where's Farm Brook on here?
It's to the north. So here's the site, here's Farm Brook, and there's no exit or entrance off of Farm Brook.
I'm sorry, where's Farm Brook?
Right on the top, top of this slide. So Farm Brook is the northern portion of the property, and there's no ingress or egress to Farm Brook. That was, there was a covenant and that was part of the ODD agreement, there would be no access to Farm Brook.
Okay, so the only entrance is on Telegraph Road? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I'm glad to see you came back to do the Culvers. But would this distract from your standard appeal around the country? How often do you do, have you, do you have outlets as a location?
A lot of our Culvers are pretty much typically built on outlets.
I'm sorry, can you?
A lot of our Culvers are typically built on outlets. Is that what the question you're asking?
Andrew, what is the typical radius separation from one Culvers to the next?
Oh, there's, typical is a three mile radius, but we have a tendency to build them, you know, further apart than that depending on the demographics and different types of characteristics within the community.
So this would be a different market than the one he's building on Southfield Road because it's three plus miles away. So there's not, he's not cannibalizing customers based on the location.
Okay, what, what is the appeal for this location for you?
What is the appeal for it? It's not a major thoroughfare, and that's.
I'm sorry.
It's not a major thoroughfare. So that's what we'd like to, you know, obviously any type of business would like to be on a major thoroughfare, and that's what the interest is of it is.
So you anticipating a lot of your, the majority of your business to be drive-through?
Not necessarily, no. We have a decent sized dining room and we're seeing dining coming back since COVID. And it's actually, you know, for us, it's kind of flipping around.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Brightwell, we've been told by several developers and realtors, and that's why this market's so hot. Based on the volume of traffic and based on the household income, this is, these are prime locations, this 12 Telegraph area. That's where everybody wants to be. So it meets two demographic points for establishing these types of businesses.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, council, any other questions? Mr. Crowe, the change, the amendment that we're asking for, can you clarify that, please?
Well, since you previously approved the concept with two restaurants with a drive-through, I consider that a major modification. And since the ODD is approved with the supporting drawings, we're modifying what was previously approved. So it's an amendment to the previously approved plan for specifically this Culvers as opposed to a conceptual two-unit restaurant with a drive-through.
Got it. All right. Any other questions, council? All right, so we will see you back next week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and then our last item for discussion would be a presentation to amend the approved residential unit development district at 21030 Indian Street, which is the former John Grace Building, for alterations to the park area and reconfigure the elevations of the new building landscaping, parking and stormwater systems.
Yeah, so this is another amendment to a previously approved residential unit development district, John Grace. Due to financing and due to comments from the National Park Service, specifically the Historic Preservation Office, modifications needed to be made to both the building and the area that was dedicated for public park use has to be excluded from the original RUDD. So those were considered significant, major changes that necessitated bringing it back for an amendment. So the city will retain ownership of the park area, which is approximately point six one acres. It's reconfiguring the park to provide a tot lot adjacent to Indian Street, a walking path and some stormwater rain garden area, land banking seventeen parking spaces, reconfiguring the courtyard of the new building to include a rain garden and a dog run, revision to the building, increasing rear setback from forty-two to forty-seven, and revise elevations. So the courtyard that was facing east is now facing west. And these were requirements of the National Park Service Historic Preservation Office because the original John Grace Building is designated historically significant. And when you build an addition, you have to make modifications so it doesn't look exactly like the one that's being preserved. That's it, in essence, existing site aerial. So the, this is the existing school building. This was what was previously approved. You can see the U-shaped building was facing east or up on the slide. And these were previously approved plans, and this is what's being proposed now. There is also some modifications that need to be made to the windows and the balconies need to be reduced for energy efficiency. And on the top is what was, or what is being proposed now versus what is approved. You can see that there's fewer windows and those windows have been modified on the west elevation. The materials stay the same, and then finally, the orientation of the building has been flipped a hundred and eighty degrees. You can see the banked parking area to the right of the slide or the south of the site. And then the walking path, stormwater area and tot lot will remain in city's ownership. So with that, I think we have a representative for the project to give you a little more detail on why the changes were needed and to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, I'm Janay Eisenmenger with Southwest Housing Solutions, the developer of John Grace Arms. We've also partnered with the Southfield Nonprofit Neighborhood Corporation on this project. In April, on April one, twenty twenty-three, we submitted this project to MISTJA. That was the third time we submitted it for nine percent credits. Each time we submit, they change their scoring. And basically, you have to be very aggressive with green features and sustainability to earn optimal points to allow for a nine percent low income housing tax credit allocation and also secure a HUD two oh two elderly grant project. If you will, on this project, we have a matrix of requirements that we have to achieve. One is very robust green standards, one is also achieving HUD's green standards, and a third one is also meeting the National Park Service requirements for rehabilitating and converting John Grace School into eighteen apartment units. And when all of those requirements come together, plus fighting inflation, high construction cost and high interest rates, our project went from a little bit over nineteen point one million and now it's twenty-two point four million. We were fortunate to secure additional financing. But these modifications are needed to meet the National Park Service requirements, meet all the green energy features that we have, we have to comply with based on the funding we secured to date.
Council, this is pretty straightforward, just trying to make sure all the governmental agencies are happy. But do you have any specific questions? All right, thank you. And again, we will see you next week for the public hearing. And now we get to our public hearing for the evening, and it is a Brownfield redevelopment plan and tax increment financing plan and development and reimbursement agreement for 29410 Northwestern Highway.
Good evening. The request I have before you tonight is to hold a public hearing and approve the Brownfield plan for Reicha Co. Inc. Reicha Co. Inc. owns the former Baco Restaurant located at 29410 Northwestern Highway. The proposed Brownfield plan was approved by the Southfield Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on October thirtieth this year in accordance with the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, PA three eighty-one of nineteen ninety-six, as amended. Following a Level Four assessor deeming the property functionally obsolete due to suffering from significant levels of functional obsolescence that exceed fifty percent of the property value. The owner's plan to, the owner's plan includes complete demolition of the existing building, structure and construction of a new two-story building with restaurant and retail. The new improvement is estimated to be a fifteen point five three million dollar investment in the Northwestern corridor. And it serves as another positive example of the city's contribution to reinvestment in our neighborhoods. The eligible activities reimbursable to the owners through tax increment financing revenues are seven hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. are $735,800 with an additional $88,270 in a contingency for a total not to exceed amount of $824,070. The S B R A will also capture $612,360 towards the local Brownfield revolving fund and $94,085 in administration fees. The owners are here tonight and they have a brief presentation of their background in the proposed project. And with that, I'll turn you over to the owner, Mr. Signore.
And if you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ryan Gucci, I work for AKT Peerless, I'm a consultant, a Brownfield consultant for this project. We also have Chef Del Senoria here.
Can you talk louder, please?
I'm sorry? We have Chef Del Senoria here as well as the project manager Nicole Antakly to answer any questions you have about the development that's proposed. Justin did a really nice job to kind of walk you through what we're looking for. Mr. Del Senoria has been in this community for over 22 years. He's had that restaurant, Baco Restaurante for, up until last March and he's closed it down. So, but he wants to kind of rebuild it and rebrand it. The building that was there was not able to be retrofitted for what he wants to do. He's been in the community for, for quite a while and he's had a pretty nice mark on the food scene here in Southfield. They closed it in March, the parcel area there you can see and the building that was built in 1983 is functionally obsolete as we've had it assessed by an independent assessor. Just going to recap a little bit, you know, we're doing some Brown, the Brownfield eligible activities would include, you know, demolition and the asbestos abatement, those kinds of things. And then the construction of the two-story restaurant. Looking at private dining and cigar bar and lounge, a seafood bar, public dining restaurant, you know, retail space and an outdoor patio. And you kind of see at the bottom, it's kind of like a preliminary elevation of what the building will look like. This is a kind of real brief kind of look, concept of what the building will look like once it's constructed. And here's kind of a floor plan, I know it's kind of hard to see, but there's several different kind of units within the floor plan that'll have the Three Seasons Dining and they have the private dining and they have a lot of other kind of cigar bars and retail sections as well, which is a big feature of this development. It is functionally obsolete, as Justin said, $15.53 million of a private investment. The eligible cost with contingency is $824,070 with asbestos abatement, demolition, site preparation and infrastructure improvements. It's a 19-year plan. They're aggressive, they want to get going on this as soon as all of the approvals are in place. They're looking for a partial opening for the retail part this next fall. And there is a significant amount of job creation that's going to be associated with this, with waitstaff, retail staff, and also some management staff with the kitchen and food production. So we also have a P A 210 that they're also seeking to help with the, with the taxes. Again, there's Nicole here, if she has any questions. And then I have any questions for me about the Brownfield plan? Then we have Chef Del Senoria here too, if you have any questions about his project. And here's some, it's been featured, you know, I'm kind of learning more about the restaurant scene and, you know, he's been, he's been around a little bit, he's been celebrated a lot. He's actually trained a lot of different chefs that have gone out on their own and created their own restaurants. So we're pretty excited that he's coming back and we're kind of reinventing the Baco Restaurants. So I'll leave it to any questions that you have or if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Do you, do you have anything to add before we open the public hearing?
No, I just wanted to mention, well, actually do, that we are also trying to implement and install EV chargers at the site for public use in order to accommodate the public for charging at the location as well.
Anything else?
I think that's it. I think there's not much more I can say beyond that. I think you all know my feeling about Southfield and how much I love doing business here in this community and I want to continue to stay here. And I think, I think we're going to develop something really unique and really beautiful on that space and hopefully drive a lot of traffic into the city.
All right, so we will now have a public hearing. So if you want to have a seat, we'll see what comments we have from the public. This is a public hearing for the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for Reicha Co. at 29410 Northwestern Highway. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record. All right, last call. All right, seeing no one coming up to the podium, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Haynes?
I guess, just curious about the expected time of finish. Like it will be before next year's all?
That's our hope. I mean, we hope to start construction, you know, pretty quick. We've got a plan, we're meeting with planning next week. And I think as soon as we can turn, you know, get it going, I think we can build it within a year.
You have a larger seating capacity?
Yes, I would say there's a larger seating capacity than what Baco was.
Okay, and I keep hearing something about a cigar bar, is that part of it too?
Yes.
Okay, just curious. All right, well, I'm excited, still waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening. Are you going to keep the Baco name or is this going to get a new branding?
It's going to get a brand new branding.
Okay. Do we know yet?
We know, but it hasn't been published yet.
Okay, fair enough.
Counselwoman Brightwell?
Yeah. And I know your, your restaurant has been a destination place since, since I've been in Southfield. Obviously you're making these improvements. Do you anticipate having the same drawl that you previously had from a customer standpoint? Or in or will you expand this to make it more appealing?
I do. I think that, I think the new concept is going to draw from all over metropolitan Detroit, where I think Baco was a little more isolated. And I think we, we did really, really well with all the office space that we had on Northwestern Highway and Telegraph. And that dynamic changed quite a bit at COVID time and still hasn't come back to those levels. And I think what we're trying to do is I want to build a concept that's going to draw from all over metropolitan Detroit that they're going to come for this, what we're going to bring.
Okay, I wish you luck, I plan to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any other questions? Councilwoman Banks?
I just wanted to say, I was surprised when I drove by the other day, everything is gone and it's razed down to the ground, but there's no other questions. Hi, counsel, are we ready for a motion?
We are.
Yes, I moved that the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan for a property located at 29410 Northwestern Highway be approved.
Support. Lots of support. All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for 29410 Northwestern Highway Redevelopment Project as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See a plea going up shortly.
Thank you.
And hopefully we'll be the first to know that the new name is. All right, counsel, next we have two ordinances to enact.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we enact ordinance number 1800 zoning ordinance text amendment to Article 4, Section 5.31 to modify the minimum requirement for parking lot drive aisle widths.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to enact ordinance number 1800, which was a zoning ordinance text amendment, P Z T A 24-0005. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1801 zoning ordinance text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number 1801, a zoning text amendment, P Z T A 24-0006. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're up to the council portion of our meeting. And Councilwoman Hoag? Councilwoman Banks?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Hicks?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilwoman Cruz? Oh, wow. Councilwoman Haynes?
You always have something to say. Just a huge congratulations to the Parks and Recs Department and Southfield Band, was it the AT&amp;T Band was it that performed at the Christmas holiday celebration? And the youth ensemble, I can't remember where they were from, but they were excellent. The entire tree lighting ceremony was great, the fire department, the police department and all those that participated was really nice. It was a little bit chilly, but it was very enjoyable. The decorations were great and it was just a nice time for families to come out and get together. And also this Wednesday at the library, the jazz and blues sponsored by the Friends of the Library, we'll have Damon Terrell, so don't forget to come out. If you're a member, you have a discounted price of $5 and non-members $7. It's really nice being at an affordable price. And I think I have one more thing, but I can't remember it. But thank you all and I'm done. Oh, that's right, I did want to say Go Lions again. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, I just want to, a gentleman tonight mentioned to me that he happened to see his class, high school classmate in one of our projects, which is the Veterans History Project with the Library of Congress. And that just reminded me, I want, I would like for everyone to be, the Southfield, we, as a veteran commissioner, we interview over 300 metro Detroit veterans who were in combat and or they served during the Vietnam era or any war. Just, and if you are, if you're interested in any military history, and I'll give you a couple of names that might entice you to, to look at it. A Tuskegee Airman, Colonel Alexander Jefferson, who was a Tuskegee Airman. He was captured as a prisoner of war during World War II when they shot his plane down. And Colonel Jefferson, he, he was a Spitfire, he was a young, young Spitfire. And he, when I interviewed him, he made, being a prisoner of war, seen that he was fun. I mean, just, he was that type of character. And his, his interview was highlighted by the Library of Congress back when, when it was first made. And also other, other individuals who were interviewed were our former chief county executive, L. Brooks Patterson, our former TV personality for the individuals who've been in Michigan for a while. I think Sonny Elliott, he was a comedian who was a weatherman. And also there was just numerous Tuskegee Airmen and local individuals who were interviewed. And we had so many, send me, well, we had so many, you know, Southfield, we submitted so many interviews that we were recognized in the congressional, congressional record by our then Congressman Sandal Levin. So if you are a history buff, you just want some, some entertainment that is real-time entertainment, just go to, it's called LOC, and that stands for Library of Congress, dot gov, loc.gov slash Veteran History Project. You can, you can abbreviate that with V as in Victor, H as in hotel, P as in popular. That's loc.gov slash V H P. And I can guarantee you there will be some entertaining live interviews. And just as another plug for that, one of our, one of our commissioners, her daughter was, was a teacher in Germany, she had married and she had moved to Germany. And she would send her students to that site to get firsthand experience about what war in a military is like. So it is very entertaining and informative and it's worth a while to take a look at some of the things that our veterans have done or had to do while they were in the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. This is the last week that City of Southfield will pick up your yard waste. I know I, this weekend, I called my landscaper just to make sure he was coming out to bag all those leaves that were still out there. So just, you know, please remember that this is the last week. Also, the Southfield Police Department will be hosting a holiday sleigh of giving this Saturday, December 14th between 11:00 and 1:00 here at City Hall. And also while you're here, you can participate in the Parks and Rec. It's having a soulful Santa celebration, which there is a small fee, but feel free to contact the Southfield Parks and Rec Department for additional details on that. Southfield Goodfellows is also seeking donations to purchase gift cards for low-income families and seniors. So if you can help out and you can reach out to our Southfield Human Services Department and participate with a donation, they would be greatly, it would be greatly appreciated. Other than that, I will turn it over to the mayor. Thank you.
Well, just, I have one update. The big break has concluded for the year. We had over 300 volunteers did 115 residence yards. We had volunteers from New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, the Ladies of Distinction and Dur Corporation. And then, of course, we had hundreds of kids from Lawrence Tech. I want to give a public thank you to Great Lakes Ace Hardware, which provided leaf bags or yard waste bags again this year. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to announce, talk about the youth art show?
Oh, well, yes, we have a new art exhibit in the lobby. And then we're having a special art exhibit this, starting this Friday from 5:30 to 7:00. There'll be in the pavilion wall that, outside the clerk's office and the assessor's office. And this is children's artwork from Orchard Children's Services. These are works of young people that are in the foster system. And they, every year they do an art show, but it's in the Mike Morris Building. And really the public doesn't get to see it. And when I've gone, the kids were just so excited that somebody is coming to appreciate their creations. So you're welcome to attend, there'll be a little reception and you can view the, the children's artwork. If you're not available Friday evening, it will be up through the end of January. Thank you for reminding me.
All right, city administrator?
Thank you. I do have one order of business that I'm asking counsel's authorization on. And that is to, of the sale of Vitoria sculpture to General Motors with the proceeds to be placed in the Care Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan. When we acquired the Northland Mall, in the lower level of the basement, there were four additional pieces that were not, I just want to repeat, they were not part of the original artwork that we bought from Northland. These pieces were stored and we've found them. And keep in mind, this is after there were three or four were three or four kind of flea markets with everyone, you know, going through the entire place and selling. Those pieces were a sculpture by Craft and Lock, which is the peacock that has been placed in front of the library. The Trog sculpture, which is in front of, been placed in front of City Hall. There's another piece by Bros, it was originally donated by the Hudson Weber Foundation, and was originally installed at Southland Mall, and it was in the lower level found. That is still in storage. The piece we're discussing this evening is the piece by Harry Vittora. And to give you some, little bit of history, as I understand it, the Vittora sculpture was a gift from the Hudson Weber Foundation to Genesee Valley Mall. Harry Vittora was a Cass Tech graduate. He is also a Crabbrook graduate. So, this evening, and this piece is very large, it is 12 by 12 feet in width and length and 29 feet long. So, you got a piece of artwork that's almost three stories in length. It needs to be hung in at least a four-foot, or a four-story structure, sorry. So, General Motors has approached this, the city about acquiring this piece of work. And if you'll recall, back in 2017, we were looking at sending this out to LA to be restored. Presently, it's being restored here in Michigan in Blissfield by a group called Flatlanders. Flatlanders is associated with the Midwest Arts Initiative, they do a lot of sculpture, restoration, fabrication, and building. They had an expert who could restore and repair and clean this piece of artwork. For a period, we've been struggling with, how will we maintain the 30-plus pieces of art that have been installed in the city? And how can we set up something that begins to look like a care fund? General Motors has expressed an interest not to acquire the property from the city. They want to acquire it from the Southeastern Community Foundation. So, the discussion has been that the city would authorize the sale of the piece of art and the community foundation, the General Motors would make the payment to the Community Foundation for Southeast, of Southeastern Michigan. The Community Foundation would then release up to, up to $500,000 for the acquisition of the Sebastian art piece, which is being planned for Nine Mile Road and Northwestern Highway across from the former IBM building. And then, the half million dollars remaining would stay in the Community Foundation with an annual distribution to come back to the Public Arts Commission. And so, this evening, the action that I'm asking in the resolution is that counsel and General Motors of Detroit, Michigan enter into a purchase agreement to sell the Vittora sculpture for $1 million, with the funds to be paid and held by the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan. Be it further resolved that the agreement authorized the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan to release up to $500,000 to the Southfield Public Arts Commission to complete the purchase and installation of the new sculpture by Sebastian, and the remaining balance of the $500,000 to be held by the foundation as an endowment for future care and maintenance, purchase and installation of public art in the City of Southfield. Be it finally resolved that your honorable body authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign a purchase agreement with General Motors and the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan on behalf of the city after the review and approval as deformed by the city attorney's office. That's the request. We've been trying to figure out what to do with this piece of art. We had it in storage here since we acquired the mall. This past spring, it went out to Flatlanders to be rebuilt. There's some unique ties, the Hudson Weber Foundation was the entity that donated these pieces of art, just like the South, the Northland Art Collection was also donated originally by the Hudson Weber Foundation. It would be going, General Motors' intent is to install it at the new Hudson's building being built downtown at the site of the former Hudson store. It solves a number of issues for us, it gives us a place to see this piece installed. It also helps us with the perpetual care of this artwork, as well as helps us match the other remaining costs of the Sebastian installation. It's my understanding that the Friends of the Art have already raised a little over $600,000 for the Sebastian piece. So, that's the request this evening.
Councilman Brightwell?
I'm, I'm in agreement with this, but can, is this the biggest thing, I want to make sure there's an ironclad understanding that the funds belong to the city and that we can draw down on that, on that amount as needed?
The, the initial half million dollars would be drawn down upon the acquisition of the Sebastian piece. The other $500,000 will be in the Care or the Community Foundation. They do an annual distribution of, they typically save four and a half percent of the amount, but the way this is being put together, we could draw it down. But it's our intent that the money would be used for the care of the remaining art pieces. It's, the agreement will be crafted for the maintenance and care, purchase and installation of additional pieces. But we're putting this together so it's more of a long-term care for these pieces of art. And we already know, you know, for example, the Southfield piece that was put in, originally out on the hill and relocated in front of City Hall, that was a gift that the city acquired in, for this, in recognition of the city's 25th anniversary. We already see some evidence that it's going to need some repair.
Sure. I'm going to agree with my, my point being that there will be no misunderstanding, five, 10 years down the road, that these funds belong to the city to be drawn down for that specific reason.
Yeah, they'll be only eligible for use by the city.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Councilwoman Cruz?
Fred, I was just wondering, this is not about this, I'm good with that, but there was a piece in Northland years ago, and I can't remember quite what animal it was, but it was a little boy that was gold, that was riding on a bear or something like that.
It's in the library.
It's in the library.
Oh, we got that already?
Yeah, it's in the lobby, library.
Okay. Well, then, I don't have a question. Thank you.
You know, that's an excellent example, though, of the challenges of locating these pieces of art. That, you know, we had to do a weight load study on the floor, on the floor, we had to remove pieces of glass to get that in, but, you know, that, that, Councilwoman's an excellent example, the challenges.
It was $30,000 to move it into the library.
Councilman, any other questions?
I actually think it's one of the coolest pictures I have, watching that loaded on the truck and being moved, it's one I have at my desk at home, so.
All right.
What do we think our next treasurer will be, we're going to find down there? Is this it? Do we think this is it?
Mr. Crowe?
I'm going to go with you on your next trip, Mayor, down there.
Yeah, just for some context, we have the public art requirement, but it's only been averaging about $32,000 a year coming in for the maintenance restoration, and there's no guarantee, we never know how much we're going to get, but if we averaged it over the last three to five years, it's only 32. So, at four and a half percent, $500,000 would generate 22 and 22.5 in a yearly allowance, which would almost double our funds. And we've had to spend considerable amount of money installing and restoring the pieces. So, to have an endowment like this would, would help guarantee that we can continue doing the work.
Councilwoman Banks? Motion? We do.
Okay, I move that counsel authorize the sale of the Vittora sculpture to General Motors with proceeds to be placed in the Care of the Community Foundation for Southeastern Michigan.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve, to authorize the sale of the Vittora sculpture to General Motors with proceeds to be placed in the Care of the Community Foundation for Southeastern Michigan as presented. Any further questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else, sir?
Thank you. You touched that, we were no longer, this is the last week to get your curbside pickup for leaf and brush pickup. We encourage people to get it out, the complaints we get in the middle of winter for folks who still have all the leaf bags on the side of their garage, is an issue for code, so if, just, an extra, just, just to get it out to the curb. And that's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, counsel. What I have before you this evening are four recent lawsuits that have been filed against the city. As you know, in the past, the city attorney's office will, I guess, for lack of a better word, just officially request that counsel approve of actions that my office can take to defend the city. And so, the first one that I have, and I apologize, I looked at it and the first sentence got a little jumbled. But this is Anderson versus the City of Southfield, it's been filed in the United States District Court, Eastern District of Michigan, which is a federal court. The plaintiff in this case was a former employee, he did voluntarily resign in 2021, he took a higher-paying job, came back, he was not rehired, and he's filed several claims against the city. And because of these allegations he's made, he's seeking economic damages, loss of wages and benefits and non-economic damages, pain, suffering, emotional distress. So, I'm requesting authority to take whatever actions necessary to defend the city and its agents or employees in this cause of action. Also, I will say that I can't make comments on pending litigation, but please feel free to call me, and I can give you the details on a phone call. So, that is the first case. Mr. President, if you want me to read the next one, are you going to go?
Are you okay if we vote on all of them at once, or do you need individual?
We can do them all at once, because I'm not going to say too much more.
Okay.
The next one is the Lakeland Neurocare Center LLC versus the City of Southfield. This is actually in Oakland County Circuit Court. This is a commercial property at 26900 Franklin Road. There are allegations that they sustained significant damage stemming from a water backup event, and they're alleging it was from city-owned or maintained sewer lines located at or near their property. They're alleging structural damage to their property, destruction of personal property, diminution in market value of their property, loss and use of enjoyment of their property. I know I didn't put dollar amount on the other one, but they all are seeking some type of monetary damage, and when it's in Oakland County Circuit Court, it's $25,000. So, that is another matter where I'm here by requesting authority to take whatever action necessary to defend the city. The third one is Colin Pierce versus City of Southfield, along with Battalion Chief Kenneth Wheaton and Lieutenant James Tagg, both Southfield firefighters. The plaintiff in this matter is a trained and licensed firefighter, firefighter, paramedic. He was hired by the City of Southfield in 2019, but there was some rule violations, and he was terminated in 2023, but there was a separation agreement. When this plaintiff made his initial complaint, he said that there was a breach of the separation agreement, because he's alleging that the city made some statements in terms of, or in violation of his separation agreement, which hindered his ability to secure employment as a firefighter. Then he amended his complaint and added tortuous interference, saying that this, whatever he's alleging as far as his references, there's a violation of a valid business relationship. He's seeking damages like the other ones, and economic, non-economic, et cetera. So, that's another one I'm requesting authority to take whatever action is necessary. Last but not least, is Kenneth Wheaton and Thomas Rosenberg, both of the Southfield Fire Department versus City of Southfield. This is in the United States District Court, Eastern District, federal court. And they're alleging in their lawsuit violations of the Family Medical Leave Act, saying that there was interference and/or retaliation discrimination. They're asking for monetary reward of the damages against the city. And a lot of these, they'll say whatever the court deems necessary, but it's usually monetary damages. I'm here by requesting authority to take whatever action is necessary to defend the city, its agents or employees in this cause of action, and the previous three. And again, I cannot make any comments on these matters, because it is pending litigation, but please call me, and I will be trying to get you something by the end of the year for any other pending litigation. Thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we allow the attorney to proceed as necessary to protect the City of Southfield.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to authorize the city attorney to take whatever steps are necessary to defend the city in the four lawsuits that were mentioned. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Anything else?
No, I had to sign. I had to wait for a minute.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening. I will have a quantified election result report to send to all of you elected officials tomorrow. I have sent it to our communication directors, as director, as of last week, but it hasn't been posted to our clerk website yet, but it should be posted it, one day this week. So, that's all from me tonight, and I'll report out our key races next meeting when I'm better able to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have nothing from our treasurer, planner, assessor, engineer, nothing to schedule. Counsel, any other business? This meeting is adjourned.